...and views of the Bay, a city that survived one of the worst earthquakes in U.S. history in 1906 and another big jolt that we were there for in 1989, only to rebuild with stronger buildings and a resolve not to be undone by the great fissures of the San Andreas Fault. In Los Angeles, there is the same unshakable resolve to continue building a vibrant downtown regardless of the challenges. The ongoing quest to make Los Angeles a livable, beautiful, and dynamic city is one shared by many. In the winter months, we marvel at the clear skies and the snow-capped mountains that encircle L.A. like a big hug. Exciting shows, professional sports, conferences dealing with every subject under the sun are held at Staples and the convention centers. There are heroes in our city, poverty providers always fighting to make sure that the gentrification of downtown includes hope for the displaced and the homeless who remain a part of downtown's landscape. In less than two decades, Los Angeles has rebuilt from one of the worst urban civil unrests in U.S. history. Shaken by the 1994 Northridge earthquake, political and business leaders alike resolved to move forward and keep dreaming of a downtown deserving of this megopolis. Remembering the movie Grand Canyon depicting L.A. as a city with great social divides, a city is stratified by cultural diversity as the geology of the Mammoth Grand Canyon itself. Then the Paul Haggis movie Crash brilliantly examined the fear of human differences which can make for confrontation even as the best in our human qualities works for assimilation. The continued building, the continued advocacy, and the continued dreaming of each of us is what is changing the skyline of Los Angeles as we overcome the divides made by freeways, cultural differences, and socio-economic disparities. All of the episodes of L.A. Business Today are available on demand on the website for Channel 35. Our producers Jessica Jimenez and Justin Scott Cummins worked with the talented crew at Channel 35 and Bob and I to accomplish interviews about business that include leaders who have the vision to see this city move towards a trillion-dollar economy and take its place among the greatest cities in the world. I love L.A. While everyone leaves a piece of their heart in San Francisco to be sure, Los Angeles offers all who live here a chance to paint on a very large canvas. We are the most diverse city in the world with challenges as great as any city in the nation, but there's no city quite like L.A. And I think at the end of the day, we all know it. It is the "we" that is triumphing over the "me," so that the Grand Canyon is becoming the Grand Cuyahoga, the one city undivided, and Crash is becoming healed, a city where differences are being championed and fears are dissolving. We salute the Grand Cuyahoga, Los Angeles, in this episode. I'm Sharon Jimenez for L.A. Business Today.
You know, it's that time of year again to clear all that annoying dry brush from around your house. In the event of a fire, dry brush is extremely combustible and can explode. By clearing brush 200 feet from your home, you create a barrier, lessening the likelihood of spreading a fire. I'll still be here when you get back. Get the message. Be prepared.
Let's get an update now on the business of investment banking. This is the process through which companies grow and are made, and it is something worth looking at right now, particularly when the lifeblood of our economy depends on the economic growth and expansion of people looking for the American dream. With me now is Mr. Mark Salter. He is founder of a company called New Century Capital Partners, based right here in Los Angeles. Welcome to L.A. Business Today.
Great to be here, Bob.
This is a company you started how long ago?
About two and a half years ago.
And before that?
Before that, I was head of investment banking at a local investment banking firm called Wedbush Morgan Securities, actually located right in downtown Los Angeles.
All right, tell me what your company does, and is there any difference from what you've done before?
Actually, we can do anything that a large, any large premier bank can do, meaning we buy companies, sell companies, we're very active in mergers and acquisitions, restructurings. We're actually finance companies, so we can take a company public, we can complete a private placement, any sort of capital raise along those lines.
All right, the key question is, what's the state of affairs in companies in Los Angeles? How are they doing? And I guess you're pretty busy.
We are. We're actually very busy, and especially given what's happening across Wall Street, meaning some of the large banks are having difficult times or even being shut down. We're the beneficiary of that. We're seeing incredible amounts of deal flow, and that is these small to midsize or even large companies seeking growth capital. They're wanting to grow, they're continuing to look for debt or equity and sources of capital. Also, a number of those companies are seeking exits because of the IPO market today, as you, I'm sure, know.
Yeah.
It's very much shut, so now instead they're looking to be sold, they're looking for a strategic partner, a merger partner. So our business is very exciting and very active these days.
Okay, so what do you tell, given all things being equal, what do you tell a mid-sized company when they're saying, okay, time to get out, it's time to leave? Do you say no, stick it out a little longer, maybe merge, or what?
Well, it really depends on, every case is very different, as you can imagine, so it really depends on the prospects, the growth prospects, really the interest of the shareholders, what's the priority for the shareholders, for the board of directors, and what we like to do is really set up a series of alternatives. So at New Century Capital Partners, we are the trusted investment banker, the trusted advisor, and as a result, we'll give them a variety of options, be it stay private, think about a trade sale, think about a recapitalization, that is, new money coming into the company, or think about a reverse merger or things along those lines.
I got a little ahead of myself. What kind of companies are we talking about? You say they're all sizes, but what do they do?
So they're companies that are in various areas of technology, be it digital media, internet, e-commerce, business services, and in terms of the size range, Bob, anywhere from, I would say, 10 million in revenues, say on the low end, up to 500 million, 700 million in revenues on the high end.
Which of these companies are doing well and look like they have sustainability? Which companies aren't?
So I would say broadly, especially in Los Angeles, where entertainment is key, we're seeing a lot of derivative plays off of entertainment. And what is that? Mobile media, we see that being very active. Wireless is very active. People want mobile devices, they want applications on their BlackBerrys, on their iPhones, et cetera. We see a lot of activity in digital media, which is really the taking old line media and making it go across the internet. That's very active. And then we're seeing some of the classic business services, which are business-to-business applications.
Okay, if you're a mid-sized company and you need an infusion of capital, how easy is it for the banks to lend you the money?
Sure, and again, what I would say is that a lot of the rules today are changing. So historically, a private company might go to their local commercial bank. Now what you're saying is you're seeing other hedge funds come into the market, which are funds that are private funds that are seeking to make that investment. You're seeing mezzanine funds come in as well, and so there's really that supply of capital available to those companies that are well-positioned and are premium companies, high-end providers.
Is it easier or safer? I know this may be tooting your own horn, but is it easier or safer going through you rather than going through a standard commercial bank?
Well, it's interesting because we've, all of the bankers at New Century Capital Partners, they're all from the largest banks on Wall Street, meaning Deutsche Bank, CS1 Boston, Merrill Lynch, and so on. So they have, we have vast relationships with the largest institutions on Wall Street, and these are pools of capital such as Ares Capital and Century City. They run about 45 billion in assets. So Ares Capital, Ramius, and so on, they're seeking high-growth, high-quality investment opportunities, and those are our clients.
All right, did you bring your crystal ball with you? Because I want you to pull it out right now.
Well, I should.
And I want you to look in it, metaphorically speaking.
Sure.
And tell us what your long-term view is of money availability, how these companies are going to fare in the long term, whether there should be some sort of panic inclinations, or do we just kind of stick it out, bite the bullet, wait for better times?
Well, I think, again, if you look at the cycles and the ebbs and flows of Wall Street and what's happening in today's economy, it's very similar to what we saw, say, in the early 2000s, and that is the dot-com era. And we banked a lot of those companies. I was the banker for E-Trade.
Yeah.
Pixar and many of others that had the highs and then they had the pullback.
Yeah.
So I think the ebbs and flows will continue, and in our view, we believe that the best-of-breed providers, those companies, again, with premier management teams that serve large and growing markets, those are always going to have access to capital. Now, in today's market, maybe the only difference is the cost of capital is slightly different.
Yeah.
The cost has gone up.
Sure. Let's hope your optimism stays with you, not only for your sake, but for the economy in general, because we want to see companies go the long haul and weather this storm. Mark Salter, thanks very, very much. You've given us some pretty good information today.
Great.
And I'm glad that you came by and we had the chance to talk.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bob. Nice to be here.
There is a great deal of optimism about the future of Los Angeles, even as we each get up every day and cope with the economic crisis we all know is going to be here with us for a while.
L.A. Business Today is really about you, the people who make up the business leadership of Los Angeles in the for-profit and not-for-profit businesses and foundations that really connect all of us.
We hope you've enjoyed going inside the new J.W. Marriott Hotel that we are all watching go up in downtown Los Angeles.
And we hope you've learned something about the investment banking world that is supporting new technologies in the media.
L.A. Business Today is available on demand on the Channel 35 website, lacityview.org. If you enjoyed the show, please tell your friends about us and email them the link to see the show online.
We thank you for watching, and please join us for another episode of L.A. Business Today.
...
Have the cards at very well. All right, colleagues, what we have today is the CLA report that addresses roughly over 50 hours of presentations, discussion about this year's budget. There are many issues that, and we're going to go a little bit more in depth this year than in the past, because normally we just present it and then have the discussions on Monday. But I think because of some of the unique issues in the budget, it's important to give a more thorough briefing today so that council members will be able to digest the information and be better prepared for Monday. A couple of things just before we ask the CLA to get started. To know what the council committee was confronted with is that we received the budget from the mayor's office, and there were immediately some issues of concern. One of the major concerns was the fact of funds that were identified as part of the revenue that was put into the budget, roughly $53 million, that had been unrealized and also had been identified in three previous or two previous budgets as a budget solution. These funds have never been realized. We have not seen the P3, we've not seen the proposal, and it's not been approved by the council. The issue also that was equally as relevant is that there was probably about $40 million of errors or oversight that basically created a $90 million deficit in this budget. The committee went forward, and this year we had additional, two members of the committee was up to seven this year, but what we've basically moved forward on is the belief that we could not balance the budget with a $90 million hole, and we certainly could not balance it and rely on expenditures based on roughly $53 million of unrealized revenue. This budget also clearly identifies that there was a need for a reserve fund. The original budget, I believe, was in the 1 point something percent of a reserve fund. The committee moved it to 3%. There are those who are critical that it's not up to 5%, but I think what the committee looked at is that if we had moved it to 5%, it would have been roughly $80 million more in the reserve fund, which may have accounted for well over 1,000 more layoffs. So we took what we thought was more judicious method of looking at the reserve fund as a 3%, knowing that the city's policy is 5%, but we did not feel that it would be a situation in which we would be able to support, that we would lay off another 1,000 people to just achieve another 2% in the reserve fund. And so these are the kind of parameters that we went through. We wanted to make sure that the obligatory expenses were taken care of. We clearly know that there's going to be a great deal of hardship in this budget, clearly established in the budget balancing is roughly 26 furlough days for those who have received COLAs and 16 furlough days for those who had not. That comes to somewhere in the neighborhood of over, close to $70 million of funds to allow this budget to be balanced, somewhere between 60 and 70 million. And so these are the kinds of things that we debated, went back and forth, and you'll see also that there's a minority report that identifies, and some votes that were taken that clearly identified that there was disagreement as related to addressing such issues as Wreck and Park, such issues with libraries, a variety of things such as how these funds that have been unrealized should be used in the budget. Clearly, the majority of the committee believed that we had done, taken as much money as we could legally from Wreck and Park and libraries, but that we also knew that if there were other means of revenue forthcoming, and if there were other means of concessions, that many of these issues could be addressed during the budget year. We did not want to be put in a position for this year as we were last year in the budget that we acknowledged over $300 million worth of concessions that were not forthcoming, and then we spent the entire fiscal year cutting the budget incrementally. And so this is something that the committee was very, very sensitive to and truly wanted to address the budget with its real dollar figures as possible and giving general managers a template to work from, but at the same time protecting what we thought was important, the reserve fund, protecting our bond rating so that we can show the consistency, but actually also making structural changes for this year and next year, and also as much as possible limiting one-time money on multi-year expenditures. So that's an overview. I'm going to ask Jerry to start it off by giving some insight so that those who did not have the ability to be at the Budget and Finance Committee during that period has that ability now to get insight, so it should be a more clear exercise as we get to Monday. Jerry?
Certainly. Good morning. As you indicated, it was, it is a very difficult budget year and will continue to be. The mayor's budget identified a gap of nearly $500,492 million, but there were a variety of issues that your committee recognized on the first day. The document, or the, excuse me, the parking-related assets and revenue were based on transactions that have yet to be approved. Additionally, you looked at the sales tax, and I think the projections for next year on sales tax were more aggressive than either the state or the county, so you instructed that those be brought down. So we looked at that, and additionally, as is common throughout these budget hearings, the committee members, through discussing with the departments, identify issues of concern, things that perhaps they want funded back, you know, the priorities that are not addressed, and of course, then we go back and try to address those and find ways of working in the council priorities into the budget. As Mr. Parks indicated, there were also some issues that were identified that were unfunded or overlooked in the budget. The city attorney budget, for example, the intent was to reduce it 10%, but in fact, it had been reduced 18%, so there was an instruction to come back and look at that. There were some other issues of funding shortages, excuse me, that needed to be addressed. So what we ended up with when the committee hearings ended was a budget gap of about $93 million. Now, my staff worked very hard and was able to identify about $30 million in revenue to put back in the budget to help mitigate that. We were able to identify some additional reserve fund reversions that hadn't been counted. We were able to identify some additional revenue coming from parking citations and fines. We also looked at increases in dog licensing fees, we looked at burglar alarm fees and other issues, so we were able to bring that gap down to about $64 million. So, when the revenue is essentially used up, the only thing left is to cut expenditures. So the recommendation coming out of the committee was that an additional 1,000 positions be identified for elimination. Now, keep in mind that the mayor's budget proposed the elimination of 761 positions that were slated as filled. Now, I'm sure as you all have experienced, our personnel is always in flux, and it's always difficult at any point in time to know what is filled and what is not, but those positions were listed as filled when the budget was released. Additionally, the mayor's budget, excuse me, assumed, as Mr. Parks said, $63 million in savings from furloughs of virtually every civilian employee, not included would be revenue-producing positions and others, and again, for 16 days for next year for those who did not receive COLAs, and 26 days for those who do receive COLAs, so that the impact on salaries would be equitable. So in essence, I think, in summary, that's what is before you on Monday, of course. You will be hearing the budget in detail and hearing the committee report, and we will, as usual, have our motion mail going on in the back room, but don't feel obligated to use it. Anyway, that's a general overview, and if you'd like, I think Karen could go through some more of the details and answer specific questions.
I think I'd ask Karen, if you could, with the overview, if you could go to some of the particular highlights that would obviously be of discussion interest for Monday.
As Mr. Miller mentioned, there were a number of goals that this, that this report attempted to accomplish. One was to remove the uncertain revenue from the budget. That includes the parking, the asset restructuring funds of approximately $53 million. It reduces one-time revenues and tries to address the structural deficit to the extent possible. Some of the highlights include those uncertain revenues, and also, one of the things that it attempts to accomplish is a more equitable reduction across the elected officials' budgets, that's included, and the balancing measures that are required there. It restores, the budget generally doesn't add much to departmental budgets, basically because there isn't a lot of revenue to go around. So the committee's report, that'll be before you on Monday, addresses some of the omissions from the budget, it tries to restore funding for underfunded accounts, it makes some corrections to the proposed budget as it was submitted, and primarily addresses, primarily addresses things that are either special funded or have no net increase to the general fund. Other, it also will make amendments to instructions, you know, the main issues are the parking revenue issues, the layoff, potential reductions in positions, and those are probably the main issues that will be before you on Monday.
Mr. Rosendahl. You didn't push your button? Ms. Perry sure did.
If you could talk, just explain to us again the concept of unrealized revenue, what that means in terms of us achieving a balanced budget based on, for lack of a better word, revenue in hand versus revenue that is unrealized or speculative, and what risk that poses.
Certainly. Well, as you know, anytime a budget is prepared, there are projections. As we saw this year, even our traditional revenues fell well below projections, but the estimates for the coming year's revenue from our property tax, sales tax, license permits, fees and fines, et cetera, those are considered in hand, even though they are projections. But even in-hand revenue is not always there. Then you get another level, I think, as you referred to, as speculative revenue, revenue based on transactions that haven't been approved as a matter of policy, transactions that could occur.
Oh, hold on a minute, Mr. Miller. Mr. Chair, there's a lot of ambient noise. I'm having difficulty hearing Mr. Miller.
You, Ms. Perry, and everyone else. Sergeant Arms, once again, we need to keep the chambers quiet. It's a continuing problem, and we need to make sure that this room is quiet.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, okay, Mr. Miller.
And then, as I was saying, speculative revenue, generally, revenue coming from transactions that have yet to be approved or may have policy issues associated with them. In this particular budget, I think you're referring to the revenues from the parking transactions. Now, there were two transactions that are proposed in the mayor's budget. The first is the P3 that's been talked about for some time. That would involve, in essence, a long-term licensing, not sale, but a long-term licensing of 10-city parking garages. Now, that is, it's actually been worked on for a couple of years, it's been in the budget for the last couple of years, but has yet to occur. We are getting close. It's, the final terms of the concession agreement are being drafted now, and then that will be sent forward to the council, and whether or not the transaction goes forward and the value of it is going to depend on the council's decisions relative to those policy issues, how long the license, the term of the license will be, the level of rate control that the council wants to exert, non-compete clauses to make sure that the value of the license isn't eroded by any actions the city does. So there are some major policy issues, but it's a transaction that's very doable, depending upon, you know, the decisions the council makes. The second is a securitization of parking revenue, which is within the control of the council, but as I indicated in our report, it is a deficit financing, and that would be, in essence, borrowing against the annual revenue flow from parking meters. So those were the two revenue sources that were, you know, quote-unquote speculative that the committee decided to take out of the budget and felt that they were not in hand.
Mr. Chair, is there someone behind me, because I pressed my button again?
Yes, we have Mr. Smith, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Rosendahl.
Okay, I'll press my button again.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President, and as long as we're talking about some of these issues so the public understands, particularly some of the people that are in the audience today, one of the critical functions in, as chairman of the Public Safety Committee, one of the things I was most concerned about was the mayor's proposed budget as it related to the police and fire department. So for the public's knowledge that we have maintained the hiring of LAPD throughout the year at attrition, so LAPD will not go below the current level that it is today, that is reducing crime to 1950 levels, is that's correct?
That is correct, yes.
But there is always the issue in that budget, there are civilian employees, 3,000 of them that work for LAPD, that are critically functional to the department's operations. So we are still left with, in the mayor's budget, layoffs and furloughs that affect the civilian side of that department.
Yes.
And I think it's a critical thing we got to understand as we go through discussion in the next few days, those are very big concerns for everybody. But we want to turn our attention really to the fire department, because that was the one that really was debated the most heavily. Mr. Rosendahl and I have grave concerns, I see the president of unions here, Mr. McCosker. What we did was, and I want to make sure that the wording is still right, because Mr. Rosendahl and I found that it's not actually the way we said it in committee, but we're concerned about the modified deployment plan and the effect on the people that is carried forward one more year, and that the concerns were that this, and where I may disagree with Mr. McCosker, doesn't brown out fire stations, but it takes units out of service. And that was what was in the plan, that's still in the plan, correct?
That's correct.
And what Mr. Rosendahl and I had moved in committee, which I think is very critical, is that we wanted to maintain the positions in the budget without funding them and without filling them for a time in the future when we may be able to, so that the mechanism is still there to bring those firefighters back and bring deployment back up to where it was a couple of years ago. And that doesn't appear to be in, and Mr. Rosendahl wants to address that, but what we did put in the budget, as I recall, and I'm looking for, I think we found it, but I'm not sure, is that when the time comes that the department, fire department, gets revenue from some of its sources, primarily fees that they provide for services such as ambulances, from one which they believe are understated, that when those revenues exceed the projected revenue for the year, that that money then goes back to the fire department to fund back those positions and begin to bring us back up to where we were a couple of years ago. So that instruction is still in there, I hope?
It is.
Okay, so I think it's very important, because I know everyone around here has had discussions with the UFLAC folks, we don't like doing the modified deployment plans, we want to bring that back to life, so there is an instruction at least that as revenues become back into the department, and they truly believe there's a couple million dollars more going to come in this year than is stated in a very conservative budget, that that money then goes back to filling those positions back up, bringing first those ambulances back, and then those fire engines back to full service, so we can hopefully by the end of the year get out, at least partially out, of the modified deployment plan. So that's still the plan?
Yes.
Okay, and that's a critical function, I want Mr. McCosker to hear that, that is still a component, and what the committee said was that public safety is still and remains first and foremost the core function of the city and the primary function that we must fund first and foremost. So we've kept the police department whole, except on the civilian side, and we're going to restate with the funds as they become available, the fire department to bring it back up. So we've maintained the core function of the city of LA, which is police and fire first and foremost. And then other proposals which are coming forward, we'll talk about all those other services later on. All right, very good, thank you very much.
I should, I should add that on Monday, what will be before the council is the mayor's proposed budget as amended by the Budget and Finance Committee. So all the reductions in the budget, and those go across every department, will be before the council, and with regard to the fire department, there was, there were a couple of instructions, one also had to do with the overall reduction in the fire department and to ask the fire department to come back and possibly come back with a different plan for that, and so that would follow.
Okay, and one other thing I just had my, I wanted to bring out too, is, as you know, we have a working group on public safety that's been trying to find efficiencies in both those departments. When I talk about the civilian positions of 3,000 that exist in the police department, many of those are issues like the scientific investigation division. Those people are now 100,000 fingerprints behind solving cases. 100,000 cases are possibly solvable, but we don't have civilians that do that work to run the machines to test the fingerprints. These are the kind of functions that we are asking the police department to identify for us, and that our working group is going to bring back a list of this council of those very critical positions that are slowing up the arrests and apprehension of people that are committing crimes, and two, some of the functions that must take place in a statutory timeframe, such as getting certain documents to court in a timely way, otherwise you lose your case automatically. And so we cannot afford to lose those functions, and they are automatically being lost because of furlough time and because of layoffs, which are indiscriminate. They just say, you're going to lose X number of people, and they're gone, and we haven't really thought strategically about which people in which, in that department. So we're going to be bringing back that list, you may hear from the police department, we need to preserve some of these functions, we've asked them to prepare that list, and the very first function we will begin with right after this budget is approved is sitting down with the chief and the department to identify out of those 3,000 people, what are those very critical functions that are the same as sworn, they must be done, and that's an important aspect. And another aspect many of us talked about around here is that often those positions are filled with sworn personnel, badge personnel, who are paid exceedingly higher than a clerk typist or a civilian employee, and we want to try and stop that from happening as well. So that is a function of the task force that will come back after that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you again to our CLA and our CAO for their extremely hard work, the Budget Committee, and all the members who have been working together with our labor partners, the men and women who are this city and who are the services of Los Angeles. We appreciate and support the work that you do, and know that every single thing that we're trying to do is both focused on you and, most importantly, the people we collectively serve, the people of Los Angeles, who want a structural and balanced budget and who want city services. We hold these values in this circle and in this city, that city services and city workers do matter. We also hold as a secondary value that it is important to run government efficiently and effectively. And we hold as a third value, too, that is, we need to continue the path of structural reform that we so ambitiously, and I would say so successfully, have already gone down this year, as we compared ourselves to our 14 peer cities, some of them can raise taxes, which we don't want to do and have not done, but we've been the most successful compared to those other 14 cities in making some of the most difficult decisions and cuts up to this point. We're about half the way there, and I can see the light at the end of the tunnel as well. We also hold as a fourth value that is important as we look at this budget, that we make sure that we do it in a way that will have the least impact on services, but that has the insurance that this will not be a phantom budget. We all have collective responsibility for two or three years of budgets that were aspirational, that said, revenue is coming, folks, we can balance the budget on it, trust us, it'll be there, and then suddenly, when it wasn't there and other revenues weren't there, it was a disservice to the people of Los Angeles and to the workers of this great city when we were there. We have a motion before you all that has seven signatures, the most that we can put on it right now, that I think reframes and perhaps dials down some of the fear, still requires some tough decisions, but will lead us towards, I think, a path that will break through in terms of where we're at in the budget. It is 1A. There are technical parts of it in here, but let me speak about it in plain English. What we have coming from the Budget Committee and what's presented to us here today, the 5-2 vote that we had in the Budget Committee, but that actually was not much different, I think, from the two that were on the Minority Report, is a desire to make sure that we have a balanced budget and that if, in the ideal cases, that we don't have, where we minimize the number of layoffs and furloughs, because people feel that, they feel that in the libraries, they feel that in the parks, they feel that in the response time from an ambulance, and they feel that on the streets that they live on. This motion would restack the ways that we have to balance this budget, would ensure that if we don't have something like the parking revenue come through, which we all hope it will, and help us have services, but if we don't, we will have a balanced budget. It shows that if we are not able to land at a place where we have mutually agreed upon, shared sacrifice from our labor unions and us, that we still will have a fallback that is a balanced budget, and it restores important services right away in the budget that is before us. So let me go through what it stacks up. In 1A, what we do is we would say that $53.2 million in revenue from parking assets would be recognized as revenue. It would also recognize some additional revenues from civil fines on foreclosed property from the motion that Mr. Smith and I put forward, that many of you seconded as well on the foreclosed properties that are lying vacant, that other cities, smaller cities have gotten millions of dollars from because banks have them there sitting neglected. And third, it would recognize the additional documentary transfer tax pursuant to council action that was prior of $6 million. It then establishes an unappropriated balance, which is an appropriate place for those who are uninitiated or who have lost already. The unappropriated balance is a place we put things that we hope to have, but we don't yet have in hand, so that we can't balance a budget on it, but if it does come in, we are able to spend on either restoring jobs, restoring services, or putting back things that we want to see. So it establishes a service reduction mitigation fund and puts $64.2 million into the account. Coincidentally, that's about the amount that the mayor's budget had for furloughs. So here's where the stacking occurs. Today, what it would do, or on Monday, excuse me, it will restore the services of the 1,000 proposed additional layoffs, taking the number back down to where the mayor's budget was of 761 proposed layoffs. But where the mayor's budget doesn't yield any more beneath that, it also gives a potential path to get to zero, but the following things would have to happen. First, we would have to have, the 1,000 are restored, we would have to get together with our unions as we have been, and figure out what is the amount that the 761 layoffs cost, and how can we figure out a different way to save that amount of money. If that is established, then what is left is $64 million in deficit. That $64 million is the same as the furloughs, and the parking revenue is anticipated to be about $53 million. So in the year that parking revenue comes in, we can stop the furloughs, and in fact, we can even make whole folks who have taken those furloughs. It gives us the protection and the anticipation that that happens, but it gives us the protection if it doesn't happen, that we will have a balanced budget, that the financial markets and that our future residents can depend on. So we wanted to put that forward, that has the support of, as I mentioned, seven folks, I think probably 10 people here is my gut, without having talked to three additional folks, but hearing what people have wanted, and I know that Mr. Weston has a motion as well that I think is on similar lines of how we can get down to a number, which then the unions and we can sit down and say, look, we did this once, we did it successfully, we did it with early retirement. Can we figure out a way where workers can turn to one another and say, I can do something small to save your job, to maybe even get rid of our furloughs, and to make sure that we also have a path towards structural health? So I appreciate the very hard work that's gone into that. Obviously, if folks have questions on this, I'm happy to answer them, but also, this has been done through the help of the CLA, this would not have happened without Jerry Miller. I want to personally thank him for him, Sharon, Karen, who have put in tireless, tireless hours in making this happen, and to be able to get to a point where I think we're coming together. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl? Thank you, Mr. President, and I did second that motion as well, so that we could move forward with sort of a line in the sand and a base backdrop to the issue. And if the monies come in, the monies come in, that's what we want, obviously. We don't want to lay off people, furlough people, or cut back on services at all. And one area that I saw, 80 folks, and now it's down to 70. And one area that I saw, 80 folks, and now it's down to 70 in the building and safety, these are revenue generating employees. We're going to put a motion in Monday not to get rid of those 70 positions if they're generating revenue and can show how they can generate revenue and can continue to be productive within the revenue generating aspect, as well as their services. So do you have any more comments about building and safety and their 70 slots?
Well, I am aware of that issue. And I fully recognize, you know, the position that building and safety is in. They are cyclical.
Right.
The fact of the matter is their workload right now doesn't justify the level of staffing that they have. The difficulty is how deep the cuts go in building and safety and whether they're able to respond to a market upturn. Because if building and safety can't process permits, it slows down economic development. It slows down job creation.
Right.
It slows down everything. So I am sensitive to that. I will say, however, that as an enterprise fund, building and safety is going to have to come up with a permanent solution. They will always be cyclical. And furloughs are not a, you know, it's not a permanent management tool
Right.
to deal with the cyclical nature of their business. So I know you're going to be debating that Monday. But they're going to have to look at a permanent way of managing their enterprise fund.
I agree. And building and safety hears this as a shout out for them to be prepared to explain that through on Monday. But any position that generates revenue should obviously be maintained. And we know that building and safety begins the multiplier effect of the economy, creating an opportunity to create jobs that creates projects. The fire department, the same way. We didn't see it clear enough in your report there of retaining those positions. And as revenue comes in, we fill those positions. And I'm also very, very concerned about any civilians, be they in the fire department or in the police department, that are critical to the safety and the mission. And we also know that a civilian costs less than a sworn officer overall. So when we look back at both the police department, as Mr. Smith and I were talking, and the fire department, I want to get better clarity on that. But do you feel comfortable you have our instructions about those positions in the fire department?
The positions themselves are not contained in here. But there was, there is an instruction that involves the, if funding comes in. And we can identify that. But if there's, if there's some clarity that needs to be made, that can be done by motion on Monday. One thing I probably should mention with regard to positions that have been requested in many cases, and this is something you may want to discuss in a broader view, is that there are a number of departments who've requested that positions be either restored or positions restored without funding behind them. Our recommendations and the committees, and what the committee had recommended also is not to restore those at this time. But that discussion should definitely take place. The concern was that if you have a lot of unfunded positions in the budget, it's not, it's not meeting the goal of having a structural change in the budget. There may, there may be some things that are exceptions to that. And that discussion can, can take place on Monday and consider where you want to make those exceptions, if you make them at all.
Yeah, and obviously, I do not want to make any cutbacks in the fire department. You know, a third of my district is in those areas where the red flags come up and we get very nervous. And obviously, as we get older, the medical aspect of the fire department coming is very critical to us as well. So we look forward to that on Monday. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Weisar?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, this has been a tumultuous budget process where we put a lot of fear into our employees. We lost the confidence of Angelenos and even New York firms that rate us every year. Because I think we put a lot of different ideas about how we could handle this huge budget deficit that we're in. And we always do this in our budget process. We have a time when the mayor gives out his budget. Then we deliberate, we throw numbers around. But what was different about this time is that we started this process way beforehand. So it was a longer time that we deliberated this and put out a lot of different ideas. People didn't really know what we were going to do. The other difference in this process as well were that the solutions were so dramatic, from 4,000 layoffs to 761, to 1,000, to 2,000. I'm very happy that we're finally coming to a conclusion so that our employees and the public could know how we're going to function as a city and continue to provide the very important services that millions of people rely upon each year. I hope as we go on next year that we have a better handle on not going through this process again. It's not fair. It puts our financial ability to borrow money in jeopardy. And it puts a lot of employees not knowing whether they're going to be able to feed their families or not. Because they didn't know if they're going to be on that list. My second point on this is I'm a bit surprised to see this motion, Mr. President, because both Mr. Carruthers and I argued that we should recognize those $53 million. And the majority of the Budget and Finance Committee did not want to recognize it. And I'm wondering what's different today that we see the flip to say that we can now recognize those $53 million? I know that before, we wanted to recognize them to go to the general fund. But there's still, in technical terms, recognizing the money, whether we put it in the unappropriated balance or not. I think it's a good thing. But I'm just wondering, how is this different from it, from what was proposed before and why the majority would be so opposed to it in committee?
I don't serve in that committee. And I didn't take any vote on either side of that committee. What I would say is that I think there was a recognition, and maybe if anybody in the committee had done this, we could have resolved that earlier. But I think there was, people had a problem with recognizing that as in someplace other than the U.B., which is what it was proposed and that this was for sure going to be in hand. So that could have maybe been a quicker fix in committee. But it just, for whatever reasons, it wasn't done. And I can't answer that question. I mean, you could ask other members. But for me, I can speak for myself as the maker of the motion. I've been always trying to make sure that we can get to a place where we minimize that. And I think the problem was it was stacked backwards. That, you know, we're saying, these things aren't going to come through. It means 1,700 layoffs.
Yeah, for all intents and purposes, though, this is going to close that gap in the deficit that we've recognized. So it is being recognized. Whether you put it in the U.B. or not, it's being recognized as a number to fill in for that deficit that we have. So it just is, in my, in my view, a matter of semantics. I'm glad we're recognizing it. We do this all the time. We, that's why we go through a budget process to do projections and expectations about what money will come in, what are the possibilities of that money coming in. And here, we're recognizing that we've been working on this plan for about three years. And as the CLA reported, it's close to fruition. And, you know, whether this council approves it or not, that's another matter. But we've done that with the Mangrove site and a number of other items that have come before us. So in this critical time, when hopefully we get out of this huge financial mess in the next two, three years, when the next three years, after the third year, when the economy starts getting better, we've got to be cognizant of budgeting in a way that helps us get through this while not cutting deeply into our core services. Because it will be very hard to rebuild upon those core services when the economy does get better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Mr. Alarcon?
Council members, I'm very pleased to see us moving in the, in the right direction. I think there's still more work ahead to drill down even deeper, to preserve the services of the city of Los Angeles. And in fact, I believe that we can get down to zero layoffs if we work much harder. There was a time when, it was just, it was just a few weeks ago that many members of this council were standing by a layoff of up to 4,000 employees. And what, what a dramatic transition we've had in the last several weeks. And it's a good transition. And I believe it's based on fact, not folly. The, the fact of the matter is that we must work with our, our labor partners to get to that point. The Budget Committee, and now that the majority of members of the Budget Committee have signed on with a Garcetti proposal dramatically changing their position from their report, which was more consistent with the likes of Mr. Weisar and Mr. Carruthers' desires, I think is a great opportunity for us to even move further to find savings necessary to reduce layoffs even further. I know Mr. Westen is working on a proposal. And I sneaked out a copy somehow. Don't ask me how, but I got an early draft. And, and I believe there are more opportunities in that proposal to, to bring us together with the Garcetti motion that will find further savings. At the end of the day, I agree, however, that, that layoffs are very much in the picture in terms of some of the revenue projections that, that we have made. In other words, if those projections do not come to be, we will have to see layoffs. The reason I was opposed to the Budget Committee's report so adamantly was because it relied far too heavily on a long-term solution of layoffs, when in fact, all of us know that the long-term reform that's necessary is in the pension system. And that is a negotiated process with labor. And so what we really need to do is expedite our negotiations with labor on the issue of pension reform. And then extrapolate the long-term benefits in terms of cost reductions that we need to satisfy the, the need to reduce our, our, our layoff projections that the Budget Committee made. So with that, let me thank Mr. Garcetti for proposing something that I think is far better than the Budget Committee's report. Secondly, I want to encourage Mr. Westen to move forward with his proposal because I believe that in that proposal, we will find further solutions that will reduce the need to cut city services further. And I think we're moving in the right direction. So let's just keep going. In the next few days, I think we can, we can make it happen. But let me, let me say, as, as one of the stronger advocates to eliminate the layoff possibility from this budget, let me, let me be public and say to labor directly, we cannot avoid layoffs without concessions from labor. And I urge my brothers and sisters in labor to work with us to make sure that that happens, to avoid layoffs, to ensure city services to the maximum extent feasible this year, but also to generate the projections of revenue that we need next year.
Mr. Carruthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm also very excited that I think we're moving in the right direction. And I would echo Mr. Alarcon's comments. The thing I want to address most notably is Mr. Rosendahl's comments on building and safety. I think it is true that we have a little less of the traditional prioritized work in building and safety. But that doesn't mean that we're totally caught up with building and safety's needs. Typically, we are always wildly behind in code enforcement. We're often criticized for it. In terms of billboard enforcement, we have an inventory of billboards in only two council districts. And that's because it was done by trained volunteers. The other 13 districts, we don't know the inventory of our billboards, which I think makes it almost impossible for us to aggressively go after the illegal ones. That's certainly something building and safety could and should be doing, should have been doing it all along. But if we have less development, let's focus them on the more revenue generating and law enforcement-oriented element of what their work could be. I don't see any reason to cut them. If they're able to generate their own salaries and catch us up on doing things that we should have been doing for years, I think that's the direction we should be looking in. And I appreciate Mr. Rosendahl raising that issue.
Mr. Reyes?
Colleagues, as far as hope that we can get to a place where we prioritize our services and our employees, I quite frankly, wanted to stay in a place as a city where we lose our discretion because we no longer can maintain our bills and the court system begins to determine what is needed to keep the city in operation. Unfortunately, the council member who is not in the seat keeps bringing up the 4,000 as if council members here wanted to lay off 4,000. That's farthest from the truth. I think it's very misleading. And I don't know how self-serving it is to try to portray as colleagues as if that was the goal. That was never the goal. The fact is, two years ago, we were given a number so that we can start taking real decisions, making hard decisions to prevent from getting to that place. And for whatever reason, it kept slipping by. Time kept ticking. And we found ourselves there. We had new council members who learned of that number. And we need to catch up on the history of that discussion. Other council members chose to forget or just forgot as if we wanted to use that number. And I want to be very clear for the record. I'm, I strongly feel we need to do the most we can for our employees, for our workers, for our constituents, and to do everything possible to avoid those layoffs. And that will be my goal, is to work with our unions, work with my colleagues to prevent layoffs, minimize furloughs, and make the city healthy. So I hope that's the last time we have to bring up that number. It's history now. Let's focus on the future. Let's act as one city and make the best case for our own health and for the sake of our employees. So I just needed to respond to that because I think it's just so self-serving to bring up that number as if we wanted to lay off people. And that is farthest from the truth. Thank you.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just wanted to provide information for the public's edification, the motion that was referenced, motion 1A, that recognizes the following revenues and establishes an account for the unappropriated balance entitled Service Reduction Mitigation Fund. And I wanted the CLA to talk about that. But for the record, I want to know, I wanted to know then. I appreciate Mr. Garcetti's leadership. He is one of several signatories on this motion. It's not a Garcetti motion. It is a motion signed collectively by Mr. Parks, Mr. Garcetti, myself, Mr. Smith, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Rosendahl. So this is the motion that was referred to earlier. Mr. Miller, if you could talk about the content of this motion and what will take place on Monday?
Certainly. This is, again, an expression of intent. And the last instruction is for us to come back on Monday with the motions to actually implement this, again, for the public's education. The actual budget hearing will occur Monday. There is a process that we have, budget motions that my staff works on and puts through. Some of them are very technical in nature to make sure that the budget document itself stays balanced. So this is an expression of intent. We'll be back on Monday with how to implement it. In essence, what this does is it does recognize the money from the P3 parking transaction. SB 1137, I think we all realize that there is some revenue to be had from that. That's the state law that allows for enforcement action on foreclosed homes which become blights. The difficulty is, it's new, and it's difficult to know what that revenue should be. The last, of course, is an issue of collecting the documentary transfer tax that we are owed from partnership transfers, and it has to do with how it's recorded at the county. So because of changes in state law, we now have access to that information. So there's some uncertainty there. So what this motion would do is recognize it. It would put it in the unappropriated balance, which means that it can't be spent until we have some, until we see where we're headed on these issues. And then as these things do come in, then the money can be used to mitigate, again, the additional furloughs or additional layoffs or what have you. But it's intended to recognize the revenue, to set a target, to monitor this, and to provide a mechanism to offset the cuts of service to the public.
Okay, I'm going to press my, Mr. Chair, I'll press my button again.
Please. Okay.
Questions?
We now have Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd just like to clarify a couple of items that were said earlier, just so that we do not continue to mislead the public. And I think Mr. Reyes was absolutely correct on the issue of the $4,000. I'm sorry I have to bring it up again, but if anyone reads that motion, it said positions. It did not ever use the word layoffs. It was always intended that positions would include cutting positions and layoffs if you didn't reach that number. Jerry, would you tell us how many positions we've cut so far?
Well, to date, it's actually about general fund, about $2,500.
About $2,500.
We've got about $1,100 or $1,200 general fund positions that retired through EREP. We've got another several hundred of those, of transfers. There have been 105 layoffs so far this year. There were positions also that were eliminated in this year's budget, as you recall, that the mayor had proposed. So in the last year, we've reduced the position number by about $2,500.
Okay. So the issue is, if you recall the motion, the quote $4,000 motion, did it say layoffs or positions?
It did say positions, and that's an important point. I mean, everything we're talking about here is money and position equivalence.
Because the position that's funded and cut is a return on to the general fund of finances.
Correct. I mean, the bottom line is that we're almost all payroll-based, so really, everything is in the order of position equivalence. If you furlough, you are cutting dollars, which results in position equivalence. If you have a reduction in salary or reduction in the work week, those all relate to position equivalence. So needing to reduce funding that equates to $4,000 positions is, in fact, pretty consistent with what's been going on for the last year.
Okay. So colleagues, the issue of the $4,000 is positions. The other thing I'd like to clarify, the significant difference between the item today on the amendment motion A versus the minority report that's been talked about, is that the minority report recommended the money go into the general fund and be spent as the budget was moving forward July 1st. The amendment puts it into a UB, unorth-
Unappropriated balance. Unappropriated balance.
That balance. Puts it into there and has triggers to say when it gets spent. So the issue is a tremendous difference from what the minority report recommends and what we're asking the CLA to come back on Monday. So anyone that doesn't understand that principle, that you, basically, the minority report says spend it July 1st even if it's not there, and progress and wait, and if it doesn't come in, you've just created a $53 million hole. The amendment actually says, if the money comes in, you then can spend it on a variety of issues that may come forward. So that's the difference between the minority report and the amendment. The other issue is, I think it's important to talk about the enterprise fund, because one of the issues that keeps coming up is whether these are free positions and why the enterprise fund was set up, and the fact that these funds have to be self-supporting, and how the department has to move and fluctuate its positions as to the funds coming in. And so if you could explain that so that we do not have a sense that these 200 or 80 positions, or whatever people are asking for, are free positions, and whether there's money available for them.
Well, the way a true enterprise fund would work is that it is fully self-supporting with both direct and indirect costs. So it's the salaries, it's the fringe benefits, it's the overhead. Now, Building and Safety's enterprise fund is intended to be, and is just that, they charge fees, you know, for inspections, enforcement, et cetera. And those fees do cover not only their direct costs, but their salaries. Now, the situation right now is that they are generating less money than their staffing would dictate. So the proposal was to eliminate positions to bring it in line with the revenues they're producing. I know the counterproposal is to reach the same amount of money through furloughs rather than position reductions, but it still must stay within the confines or constraints of the enterprise fund. And as I think, as I indicated in my earlier remarks, one of the difficulties on an enterprise fund like this is that it is always going to be cyclical. There are ups and there are downs. And Building and Safety on a permanent basis is going to have to develop a staffing plan and model that will let them do that without furloughs, because furloughs cannot be, should the council decide on Monday, to go with furloughs instead of eliminating these positions. It can't be a permanent solution.
Okay. Let me just, could you explain what happens on the enterprise funds if they exhaust their reserve?
It hits the general fund.
So the general fund has to absorb what was intended to be an enterprise fund and taking it off of the reserve fund?
If these employees are working and they're not generating enough money in the enterprise fund to cover them, it by definition is going to fall on the general fund.
So that's the danger of having unfunded positions and the ability to fill them if you cannot absorb the cost within the enterprise fund?
Exactly.
So we'd have an unintended liability on the general fund?
And that applies not only to an enterprise fund, but other types of funds as well, such as grant-funded positions where you have administrative or other types of caps that need to be met. So there are other examples that apply in that case, too. And so I mentioned that you may want to take a look at the unfunded positions in a broader context that would apply in those situations as well.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Glad we're having that discussion, because on another issue with the fire department is the hazmat teams. You know, the hazmat team, we're talking about 24 positions, that one hazmat team, full squad is with LAX, Lawa, the other one is with the harbor. And we're in the process of working with both the harbor and the airport to find funding. How are we doing with that so we can continue those two hazmat groups?
Well, all efforts to identify funding from, you know, the reimbursements from proprietary departments or other sources are always being looked at. That's a constant. I think where it comes to the fire department, again, the proposed budget assumed a certain level of reduction, and there was interest in trying to make that reduction work as well as possible. So one of the things that the Budget Finance Committee requested and has recommended is for the fire department to come back with some sort of a plan. All of those could be incorporated into that plan, but with the goal of getting to whatever that reduction ultimately is.
Right. Well, you know, Ms. Hahn is working with the port on that aspect of the port taking over responsibility for hazmat. So I'll stay close with the airport on that, and she'll do the harbor, and we'll find a way to make that happen. But I'd like that to be discussed and thoroughly analyzed on Monday. Also, the proposal that we put forward about charging for parking, we have 160,000 parking freebies every year. Some discussion has been, well, maybe each council office should be given X number of free parking passes for people they bring in for various reasons, but then when they reach that quota over that, maybe there would be a revenue stream that could develop. I want to be creative on revenue streams. I don't want to stop anybody from coming down to City Hall. But, you know, we charge nothing. I thought seven bucks would be a great number, but those issues are for Monday's discussion, and I want to make sure we bring that back up.
Right. And again, that was something that came up in the course of discussion with the Budget Finance Committee. It was, the idea was to charge for guest parking. So these are the folks who come to visit City Hall and currently don't pay for parking. They generally come, they're invited to City Hall generally. So the recommendation that the Budget Finance Committee included in its report was to have General Services take a look at that and come back with some sort of a report. So that's in the committee, and yes, certainly, that can be discussed on Monday.
Very good. And anything else we can think about as revenue streams on Monday? Obviously makes sense. As we know, Building and Safety, those positions, if they're money-generating positions, we need to find how we can preserve them. Then there's also the question of enforcing codes. There's actually a dialogue going on that in lieu of compliance, maybe there would be fees that folks would pay for various exemptions or variances. That is an ongoing discussion. It won't happen for this budget, but I think it's something we should also be considering and at least raise that issue next week about compliance issues in both planning and in building and safety, and maybe some kind of a variance of money in lieu of, rather than enforcing.
Yeah. I think the important part about the budget, it's always fluid, and looking at these kinds of things is an ongoing process. Each year, departments are asked to look at their fee structure. So those recommendations come in throughout the year, and there's always, even after this, the budget is adopted, there are always opportunities to continue to look, and those should be pursued.
My last point is about the animal shelters, the northeast one or northwest, what we're talking about. We want to have more clarity about what impact it will have on various animals and what we can do to make sure that the killing of the animals isn't the strategy, but a way of adoption, a way of including them in other shelters as a possibility.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Labonge.
I was going to wait till Monday, but I just want to get some point. Mr. Rosendahl talked about hazmat in the San Fernando Valley, and Mr. Smith's district, who's very well acquainted with it. I saw you in conference, Greg, and he got asked, Fire Station 87 has had mat. They should continue to have hazmat. The last two major earthquakes have been in the San Fernando Valley, and the last episode could be the third of Tehachapi in '51. So that is key. And also, I do think we should always try to open our doors as wide as possible if people do want to come, in some way to make it easy. I was very disappointed, because some people have asked me, why is disappointed with the Department of Water and Power, is they do not now allow people who come to their commissions to get validated at their building. And I was disappointed that they stopped letting people who would go to the Music Center use their facility. They have a very good security team. They could deal with that. But that disappointment kind of steamrolled, and some of my extra disappointment in my alumni that I had up there at Water and Power. But now, as we go forward, I don't want us to lose sight, Karen, that we're here to serve people, and if they could come into this building or to the other parking garage, we should make it convenient, make sure it's fair for people to do that, to testify and others. And also, I'd say to General Services, look at the interior of the lower garage in City Hall. If there's any way they could remark to get additional city cars over here so they would fill more spaces over there if there was a need to get more spaces in there, and use that facility on weekends to help offset El Pueblo, which sometimes get overcrowded and they go to other lots. That's within a block's distance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Garcetti. Pardon me? Mr. Garcetti? Okay.
Oh, he wasn't. No, that's just how we talk.
You're up.
Just on the report basis. It wasn't you, Karen. No, that's just.
Thank you. My apologies, Mr. President. I just wanted to say a couple last things, and I'm eager to hear from the public, and I'm sure the public is eager to speak, and thank you for your patience. And thank you to the CLA for kind of detailing more of how this would play out. There's a couple things that people may ask, and I kind of wanted to anticipate what those questions would be and give some answers to them. But to frame what we're trying, how we're trying to resolve this, this proposal is a real budget that's based on real numbers. And I think the people of Los Angeles deserve something that is, you know, based not on, hey, we might get money, but that we, if we don't have money, we have a way of closing the budget. That's one of the main differences. This proposal also, I think, by restoring some of the more draconian cuts, if we weren't able to see some of these things come through, additional revenues we've worked on around here restores public safety, some library and other critical functions that would have deeper cuts without this. And the initial budget we had was unfortunately balanced with some speculative funds. This proposal makes sure there is a plan in place to prevent a mid-year deficit. And this is a very important point, because I think those of you who have watched this year have probably come back four or five times when we have to keep rebalancing the budget. Part of that is because revenues went down even further, as the economy was in even worse shape than folks anticipated this year, but part of it was that we kept kind of kicking that can. And then, third, you know, the proposal sets the stage for the fundamental structural reforms that I think we've had a pretty successful year on, pension and healthcare in particular, to secure the long-term fiscal strength. These are not easy conversations. We, as fellow workers, with our city workers that are out there, want to make sure that there is a pension fund that is well-funded, both on our sworn and our civilian side. We want to make sure that there's healthcare that is affordable, but we're going to have to be a part of solving that. We know that that's the long-term solution, and a year or two that gets better, the temptation is to go back into business as usual. One of the things that Mr. Parks and I talked about, and that I think all of us around here, we should probably start talking about a plan or a group of folks that would look at a plan for how do we grow when we come back? What is a more responsible way to grow? Where should we be pegging our CAOs to have reasonable increases in our contracts that don't go out of whack and get us in places that are bad? How do we get our benefits and our pensions to a reasonable place? Those sorts of things, I think, are going to be as important as anything we do to resolve this year's budget as well, so that we protect services both in good years and bad. The questions that may be asked of us in terms of this, in terms of what does it do? And, you know, does this really actually provide the things that we want? One of them is, what has this budget accomplished? Well, in concrete terms, we delay the trigger, the layoff trigger, in order to negotiate shared sacrifices and allow for our parking revenue negotiations to move forward. That is worth, when you look at unemployment insurance, when you look at vacation time and sick pay that we have to pay out, and we look at the cost of living increases that are automatically triggered, that saves us somewhere in the area, I think it's $41 million?
$41 million.
$41 million. That's not inconsequential, because in plain English terms, what we get with a COLA trigger and layoffs is we're telling the people of LA, hey, by the way, you have fewer people providing less service to you, and those who are left behind just got a raise in a recession, a big raise. It's not that the workers don't deserve it. It's not that it's something that we need to make sure gets to workers eventually. But I don't think we can look any of the people we serve in the eye and say, hey, guess what? Fewer people, those people stuck around, we gave them more money, and we're balancing the budget. It just doesn't add up. So it provides more truly structural reform and preserving services. Are we delaying the problem? Well, layoff savings were always based on a nine-month period, so we do have that time. October 1st is what was the average layout was anticipated to begin, when we looked at this year and how many people we would save. And then lastly, how is this structural? Well, we're going to seek to negotiate some of these layoffs and furloughs away with things that would be structural, and that's a critical point. We're not out of the woods just because we envision a good way out of here. We still have to have those difficult conversations. But we proved with EREP that we can do that with our partners. They proved it. They stepped up. They were the ones who actually helped that. And whether you are a firefighter, or a police officer, or a resident, or a librarian, or sanitation worker, the collective sacrifice that happened allowed us to keep the number of police officers that we have, so that sacrifices that were made helped us drive the crime rate down last year. It helped us to preserve the critical city services that people depend on. And even the cuts that were made is something that we can then, and Mr. Parks has proposed a list of what we would put back as revenues comes back, to make whole the modified staffing schedule, to put people back to work in all of our neighborhoods and our fire stations. We can look at libraries and get back a sixth day. Those things, if they do break for us, we can do, but we'll do it responsibly. We won't say we'll do it, and if there's a hole, we won't know where to go. What we will say is, we have a plan, insurance, should things go wrong, but in the meantime, we can go forward with a way to negotiate these and get us back to being on track. So with that, I again thank the workers that have been a big part of this. Some of our very best ideas that are in this budget, and that gets lost in some of this conversation, came from workers. Dog license, approach to our dog license canvassers, looking at our library stuff, and I was just talking with librarian, we'll make sure, you know, the DVD suggestions, other things are in there. These are the things that will protect services, and they came from workers. Even the early retirement incentive package was something that came from the workers. So I thank you for having done that and making sure that we protected those services this year.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Alarcon, followed by Ms. Perry, is our final speaker.
Actually, I wanted to ask a specific question of the CAO, if we could. I'll present it to the CLA, and maybe the CAO can chime in. I'm particularly concerned about the proposed cut of 26 EMS captains, and I'm concerned on two different levels. One, I believe they actually have the effect of generating revenue, because they help manage the over 100 paramedic operations that we manage every day. But number two, I also know that they're part of the EMS system of the county, and essentially, we're part of an agreement that we had with the county to ensure that we managed our paramedic system effectively. And so, has anybody done an analysis of the revenue savings by cutting these positions or revenue loss that we might generate? And has anybody checked with the county EMS system to understand what they might, what might happen to us? Will they disallow our paramedic program if we eliminate this quality control position?
I'm not sure I can answer that last question. That may be one more appropriate for the fire department, but just in the overall context of the fire department budget and those reductions, a great deal of concern has been expressed about the reductions in that department. I think what the committee had asked and would be moving forward is for the fire department to work with the CAO, CLA, and see what adjustments could be made to live with. I think what the committee had asked and would be moving forward is for the Fire Department to work with the CAO/CLA and see what adjustments could be made to live within the budget. And I think any revenue that might be coming in all needs to be part of that discussion.
But the point I'm trying to make is that our system is authorized under the County Emergency Management System, so it's not as if we can just do this in-house. We have to check with the authorities, meaning the county system, to make sure that if we make those cuts, we are, we do not find ourselves out of compliance with requirements that they hold us to as the managers of the emergency management system. So it doesn't seem to me that anybody's asked that question. How will the county react? Would they cut services to us, cut revenue to us? What might occur?
Well, actually, Mr. Alacon, you're exactly right. I don't think it ever occurred to any of us to ask that question. We will. I think during the budget process, the Fire Department didn't express a concern about whether the certification would be in danger. That's a very important question, and we'll make sure we know by Monday.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Chair, I have no further questions. I'm fine, you take me off.
You're gonna pass? Okay. Well, that concludes the comments from the council members. We have a stack of cards here from a wide group of individuals, and we will first start out with the representatives from the Labor, from United Firefighters of Los Angeles, Pat McCosker, followed by Roy Stone, Librarians Guild, Bob Skoliver, SCIU 721, Judy West, Rexton Parks, Alice Goff, Dave Buncheck, and Jackie Chulin.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I recognize that we decided to move first with the budget item, but there are three presentations that we told them nine, and then we told them 10, and now we're at 10:35. I'm wondering if we could do those items and then continue this item, because this item won't finish for last.
Well, that's exactly what I would like to do, because we have a presentation for, there's three presentations, and one is for a retired member of the City Attorney's Office, and there's two others. I know you have one. I've been informed that it would be inappropriate to do that this time, but if we can do that, City Attorney, where's Mr. City Attorney?
Because the budget item is gonna go on for some time.
We've been informed that we can't do it in a special meeting.
We could, we could...
Well, by the time we finish this, Mr. Garcetti, it's going to be afternoon.
City Attorney's right there.
It's 9 o'clock this morning.
There's the City Attorney.
Where's our City Attorney?
Right there.
Mr. Carmen Tutanis, give us some direction, sir. Dion? There's been a request from the floor from Mr. Wezar on the three presentations, to proceed with those and then come back to the public comment.
That's what I said, recess.
We've got three presentations, and we need to get the clarification if that can be done at this time. Mr. Wezar, for the record, I totally agree with you. We have to follow whatever established rules. Mr. City Attorney? You want to inform us? Say it on the record while we have been. Mr. Tutanis is right here.
Since this is a special meeting agenda, it, the council should take a recess into the special meeting, possibly have five members step out, and then the presentation could proceed.
Well, then let's do that. Let's take a recess. If five members can step out for the moment, we'll do these three presentations, get back to the public comment. These folks have been here for public comment, and also these people for the special presentations. So let's take a recess. Five members, please leave the chambers, and we will begin with Mr. Wezar.
Motion to recess.
Well, we're just gonna do the recess while we do the presentation and go back into session. Mr. Garcetti?
What I would say, colleagues, is make sure that you do not leave. I know there's a funeral that many want to attend. We cannot lose quorum. I think we, these folks deserve to be heard and deserve to be heard as soon as possible. So please make sure that we have quick presentations if we're going to do presentations. We can only do that by not having a formal meeting and five of us leaving. Those folks that step out of the room do not leave the building, because we'll need to come back right away and hear what these folks have waited very patiently to tell us.
Well, we will be done with this momentarily. Mr. Labonge?
Yeah, just for the record, Madam City Clerk, I'm excused to leave at 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wezar, you're our first presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I will be cognizant of the fact that we do need to move quickly on this, but I have with us today an individual who has served the city for over 30 years, and she, we are joined today by members who work with her each and every day. This is the Altsereno Senior Club, and they have been active in the community for a very, very long time. And today, colleagues, we are thanking and recognizing Luz Davidson for her service as a Director of Recreation Centers in the Valley, in the Pacific area, in the metro regions of the City of Los Angeles. I'm very pleased to honor this very special woman this morning for her outstanding leadership, dedication, and commitment to the city's Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks. Fortunately for Council District 14, she was assigned as Director to the Altsereno Senior Center, where for the past 24 years, she has dedicated herself and her energies to the many seniors of Altsereno and its surrounding communities. Born in Michoacan, Mexico, which is close to Zacatecas, where I was born, probably related, in 1953, Luz's family then moved to El Paso, where they lived for a short time before coming to Los Angeles in 1968. We also have that in common, I was born in 1968. Luz graduated from Franklin High School and received her BA degree from Cal State Northridge.
Mr. Wezar, if you could just hold for a second, there's a lot of noise on the side of the chambers, and I would like to ask people on the sides if they could take their conversations out into the back room, the back hallway, so that everybody can hear this presentation, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President. After all, Luz has given this city 30 years of her life, and if you see the support behind us, a lot of people truly appreciate the work she has done. In 1990, she moved to Altsereno, where she continues to reside to this very day. She was married for 11 years to Tom Davidson, who passed away two years ago. She is looking forward to her years of retirement and the time she will now be able to spend with her two stepsends, two grandchildren, her mother and father, four sisters, two brothers, and over 100 immediate family members. That's another thing we have in common, I have a huge family as well. She's looking forward to volunteering at her church, as well as continuing her love of painting, gardening, and travel. She will be greatly missed by every one of us and all the people she served at the Senior Center. Fortunately, she's still going to be in Altsereno, so she's not going away completely. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Luz with a certificate of appreciation from the City of Los Angeles, thanking you for your 30 years of service, and we all want to appreciate not only the work you did there, but how you did it, because as you see here, we have a lot of supporters who love you and who want to thank you for your service and for being their friend as well. Thank you so much, Luz. Congratulations.
I just wanted to say thank you very much, and it was my pleasure. Love them.
Thank you.
Our next person, Mr. Zine will be our next presenter.
Well, we bid farewell to someone who spent a lot of time here in chambers. Cindy, come up with us, please. Retired from the City of Los Angeles Civil Liability Division after more than 33 years of responsible and dedicated service to people of Los Angeles, Mike Clayson, who we've seen in the chambers many, many times. Mike is gonna retire, he's here with his son Stephen and his wife Cindy. Mike, the Managing Senior Assistant City Attorney, retired February 13th from the City of Los Angeles Civil Liability Division after more than 33 years of service. November 1977, Mike joined the Department of Building and Safety as a building municipal inspector. Over the next 10 and a half years, he had several significant assignments, including formulating and directing building and safety's role in the city's interagency slum housing task force, designing and instituting effective policies and procedures to enable the department to take criminal action to enforce compliance with the city's building and zoning codes. Attended law school at night, graduated in '86 with a degree from the University of Laverne, was admitted to the bar in '86. Mike became the Chief Building Mechanical Inspector in '87. In '88, accepted the position Deputy City Attorney, Criminal Trial Section, LA City Attorney's Office. Over the next two years, prosecuted many state, county, and city cases involving consumer fraud, price manipulation, building and health code violations, unemployment insurance fraud, and tax evasion. In 1990, transferred to Public Works Transportation Special Litigation Division of the office, where he defended a variety of complex lawsuits, including a $125 million lawsuit by a class of over a million sewer service charge users, prosecuted breach of contract lawsuits against 10 public entities and county sanitation districts to recover unpaid sewer service charges. In 2000, promoted to Managing Assistant City Attorney of the Special Litigation Division, where he supervised 15 attorneys and support staff representing the nonpreparatory departments of city in complex, multi-party civil litigation, including construction and class action suits. In '05, promoted to Managing Senior Assistant City Attorney of the Civil Liberties Division, managed 124 attorneys and support staff, and defended the city against lawsuits resulting from personal injuries and property damage, breach of contract, police misconduct, discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. After retirement, plans to travel with his wife Cindy, visit his children, Laura and Stephen, and ride his Harley Davidson. And I will tell you that since retirement, Mike and his son Stephen and I have traveled the highways on our Harley Davidsons and enjoyed those opportunities. The city and the mayor commend and congratulate Mike for his many years of dedicated service to the people of Los Angeles. Extend best wishes for a happy and rewarding retirement, and we have the resolution signed by all of us for you, Mike, and congratulations to you for a job well done. And we are pleased to have the City Attorney Carmen Tutanis with us to say a few words, and also William Carter, the... When are you guys gonna speak? All right, here we go. Carmen Tutanis, City Attorney.
Since taking office, Mike Clayson has been a real plus to my administration. When he left, we were 27 for 27 in jury trials. When I first got there, I realized that Mike was the type of guy that wasn't gonna just placate me with a yes-man kind of advice. We had knock-down, drag-out battles in our litigation seminars over what cases to try and what cases not to try. And Mike's advice has always been fed-on, accurate. I miss Mike in those meetings, because I don't get the same honest clarity without him there. Mike, it's been a, as a new city attorney, to come in and have a guy like yourself just give me the honest advice, holding nothing back. And trust me, when I say holding nothing back, Mike's the type of guy that holds nothing back. And to have that kind of a record in the, I guess, the seven or eight months that we were there, 27 for 27, on calls for jury trials, that's a pretty damn good record. And I congratulate you for that, we miss you dearly. I look forward to riding my Harley with you, with you after we get some time. And one little antidote, on the way to Vegas, I happened to have a small accident on my Harley, and the wheel was wobbly. Mike said, "You can't go down, but I can," and he jumped on my bike, and I rode his bike, and he took it to Las Vegas for me. So Mike, thank you for that.
Mr. Zine, before, we have several speakers in the queue.
Before that, we are joined with representatives from the City Attorney's Office, from the section that Mike worked with, also his son Stephen, who was taking photoses here with his lovely wife. So before we hear from you, Mike, and Mike's been in the hot seat many times on civil litigation cases, I'll tell you, he's a great motorcycle rider, we've had a great time on our bikes, we're gonna continue doing that. Let's hear from our colleagues, and then we'll hear from Mike.
Mr. Rosendahl.
President, Mike, I got to see you and work with you over the last four and a half years since I've been here. I lost all my hair, and your hair turned gray. I watched it every week as we were doing it, but you were terrific, you were honest, you were straightforward, you didn't mince words, we sat in closed session a lot to try to figure out this, that, and the other. You would take the questions, I think Carmen Tutanis hit the nail on the head, you're the kind of guy that we like, because there's no BS within you, there's straightforward stuff. We either like it or don't like it, that's our job to work on it. But thank you for your contribution to making this city a better place. Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Alacon.
Yeah, very quickly, I just want to say that, Mike, you've been, I've seen you in two iterations back, dating back to the 90s, and I can say that there has been no city attorney that has been more consistent, more correct, and more direct with the council than you. The fact is that many people are intimidated when they sit in this horseshoe, not you. And that's appreciated, and believe me, the one thing I have to tell you is that I'm not sure you'd be a great poker player, I don't know if you play poker, but you have these little tells about whether you think somebody is being ridiculous, or whether you think they're being right on. You have, you're a stoic kind of serious guy, at least in the horseshoe, maybe that's because of the horseshoe, I don't know, but you have these funny little tells, and I used to get a kick out of watching, particularly when a council member was saying something that you thought was ridiculous, because you had these little tells that would let us know. But I want to wish you well. The last thing I just want to mention, you know, we're losing a lot of great city employees as a result of the early retirement program. Mike, I know you're one, but there's a body of institutional wisdom that we are gonna have to transition to recover from. I hope that you don't go far, and you stay in touch with your colleagues to help them when they do not have the kind of experience and depth that you have, that will be very helpful to the city, so that you can help us through this transition. God bless you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. Mike, I just want to say thank you. Having sat with you at a variety of things, from Claims Board to Budget and Finance to Council, you've given us a good deal of very positive advice. I can't remember a time you didn't have the answer. I don't know if you just made it up and we didn't know better, but the issue is, you always had the answer, the things we needed, and you always gave us the guidance of how to protect the city's treasury. And it was really refreshing, because you knew when you left those conversations, you had the right information, the correct information. Now, if we ignored it, that was on us to ignore it, but the issue was, you always were there upfront, and that is something that really I appreciated. And again, the fact that you were so prepared, even if the attorney for that case wasn't there, you had a grasp on the issues that were able to move those items forward, and again, with always the eye on the city treasury. So thank you, best of luck in your retirement, and just from my perspective, there's life after work with the City of Los Angeles.
Mr. Wezar.
Mike, I just wanted to thank you for the work you did and for your service to the city, and, you know, sitting in the Budget and Finance Committee, and you come in and you just have a couple of minutes to explain to us some very complicated legal matters, and to suggest to us whether we settle, move forward, or appeal. But I think we were able to move forward with confidence that you were giving us the best advice, and as you look around in this committee, we all had the respect and confidence that you were giving us that best advice, so thank you so much. Your work has saved the city millions of dollars and has put our city in a position to defend ourselves well because of the work you did. In very limited time, when you come to the decision, they could say yes or no, that short time that you have, and the fact that we followed your advice showed that we have a lot of confidence in you. Thank you for your service, and the City of Los Angeles wants to thank you as well. Thank you.
Mr. Zine, please go ahead.
Your turn. Okay. Just briefly, just first of all, I'd like to thank my family for being here, I wish my daughter could come as well, but she had to work. I'd like to thank Councilman Zine for putting this together for me, and for City Attorney Carmen Tutanis and Bill Carter for showing up, and I especially want to thank the people behind me. And I especially want to thank the people behind me, because I'm just a figurehead. They're the ones that do all the work, and I thank you very much for doing all that.[606.12][606.12](Applause). For thirty-two years, I showed up every day. I gave it one-hundred-and-ten percent, and as a result, I got everything I wanted, everything much more than I expected, and I would do it all over again. Thank you.[619.32][619.32](Applause).
Thank you, Madam President.
Congratulations on your retirement, Madam Clerk. I believe that concludes our presentations for today. What is our next order of business?
We would need to take up item one. I believe there's public comment.
All right, we have an enormous-
But we'll need ten members.
All right, let's get one member back on the floor, please. Can we have the sergeant-at-arms get one member back on the floor, so we can get back to ten and have a quorum? While we are waiting, well, we have to wait until we get a quorum again. All right, so we need one member back on the floor. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Kerkorian, I believe you have a request.
Thank you, Madam President. If we may, item number eight is relatively non-controversial, and I know we have people here wishing to speak. I wonder if we might take that item out of order before we go to the public comment?
All right, that's fine, because I don't think that'll take that long. That had already gone through committee. Why don't I call the speakers? First speaker is Arnold Sacks. Arnold Sacks, why don't you come forward? Dr. Clyde Williams, are you still here? Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Is Dr. Williams here? Dr. Williams, why don't you come down to the mic? And while we're waiting for Arnold Sacks, if Lisa Sarkin is close, she can come on up and get it started. While Mr. Sacks is walking down, I don't see Dr. Williams. Lisa Sarkin.
Lisa Sarkin, Studio City Neighborhood Council. We've already issued two community impact statements relating to this issue. Studio City zip codes nine-one-six-zero-four and nine-one-six-zero-two have been overcharged by the Department of Building and Safety, because we were put in the wrong zone when the new zone ordinance took place, I think it was in two thousand and eight. I'm actually not sure about that. We've asked Paul Kerkorian's staff and Paul Kerkorian to immediately look into, when he became our council member, to look into this, and it was found that, of course, there was an investigation that took place with a report. And last year in July, this report went to the Department of Building and Safety's commission, and it was passed, and it was acknowledged that an error had been made. The city attorney and the CAO both concurred that this error was made. So, basically, we've been charged, it's going to be up to two years now, we will be overcharged for the electric rates. Frankly, I don't know anything about the water rates. We don't get any answers that they really, that you can't even conclude exactly what tier we're in or anything when you call the Department of Building and Safety. We ask that you vote yes on this today, and you request an investigation as to why it took at least two years for this to come to the city council. And we respectfully request a full refund for all properties in the nine-one-six-zero-four and nine-one-six-zero-two area of Studio City. Thank you, and thank you for bringing this forward today.
Thank you, Ms. Sarkin. Mr. Sacks is here. Is Mr. Doc- is Dr. Clyde Williams still here? Dr. Clyde Williams? Oh, I don't think Dr. Williams is in the chamber anymore.
Can you restart my clock while you're talking about Dr. Clyde? Well, thank you. This is what the problem is with the city council. Pay attention, please, hopefully. You want to discuss a change to the electric rate ordinance. I say again, the electric rate ordinance, number one-eight-zero-one-two-seven. Yet last month, you just had contentious hearings regarding an electric rate increase that half the council members didn't know if it was for three months or for permanent. Can you discuss a change to that electric rate ordinance? Or is that locked in stone? You can change this rate ordinance, but you can't change that rate ordinance. Let me give you a better example. On several meetings, you come here, there may not be council members present in the chambers, but they're in the back room, but they're considered part of the council. Yet today, you took a recess and said, "If several council members leave and go in the back, and go in the back, we won't have a quorum." So, when is the back considered part of the chambers, and when is the back considered not part of the chambers? When you say so. Those- this is just an example of how you do your business. How is the public supposed to respect you? I mean, change your last rate ordinance. Go back and say, "We only want it to be three months." And again, I asked this question once before, and get an answer, I probably won't get it today, but what did the mayor know? The mayor pushed for the rate ordinance increase. Did he know it was for three months, or did he know it was for a year? Or, excuse me, not for a year, but permanent? These are simple questions, and yet can't get an answer. But we'll leave the tough budget discussions for you, because we know you can't answer the simple questions. What are you going to do with those questions?
Barry Johnson.
Barry Johnson, Studio City Residents Association. In zip codes nine-one-six-zero-four and nine-one-six-zero-two, there are over twenty thousand households that have been overcharged in their electric rates for the last twenty-two months. Estimates are that it could be as much as a thousand dollars per household, and at this point in time, this ordinance does not address a refund for the last twenty-two months, and we would like to know how we can get a refund of this six-hundred to a thousand dollars per household. We're not talking small change here when you multiply that amount. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kerkorian, any other comments? All right, let's open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes. Twelve ayes. All right, thank you very much. Next order of business?
That brings counsel back to item one.
All right, first group of people, I will call up our, the representatives of their respective unions, and each speaker will be accorded professional courtesy of two minutes each, since they represent larger numbers of people other beyond themselves. But I would like to call them all up at once. That's Pat McCosker, Roy Stone, Bob Schoonover, Judy West, Alice Goff, Dave Bunjack, Jackie Chillin, Michael Davies. All right, Mr. McCosker, you're first.
Good morning, council members. Pat McCosker, president, United Firefighters of Los Angeles City. First, your firefighters would ask you to save jobs, save services, save money by not laying off a single civilian employee, not furloughing any of our brothers and sisters in city labor. That's the first thing.[1107.22][1107.22](Applause). Makes no sense, no sense at all.[1110.16][1110.16](Applause). By the way, we cannot afford any more cuts of our civilian workforce in the fire department, and your citizens certainly can't afford it either. It's false economy. You know, last year, you didn't vote to cut our service. You didn't close those twenty-eight fire companies and ambulances. You remember how the budget was put together last year? That happened as a result later on down the road, but it wasn't your call. You've never reduced our service. Please don't do it now. The budget that you'll start deliberating on Monday would further reduce our service, would keep those companies closed, would cut other valuable services, like EMS district captains, the people that command at our most critical medical incidents, and save you more money than they could ever cost you, and are so needed by the hospitals, and in terms of quality control for all of our paramedic services. Don't cut them. Don't close two of your three hazmat units in this city, leaving one to protect four-hundred-and-fifty square miles, the top terrorist targets in the country. We need those hazmat units, and you need them to protect your citizens. You know, the public has paid a steep price already with these closed fire companies for the last eight or nine months, and we want that to end. But what I'm concerned about is that a firefighter is eventually going to get killed if we don't open those companies. I've been in here in recent days describing some close calls we've had. Councilman Gwizar saw it with his own eyes. Please end the MCP before a firefighter gets killed. This budget that we're pushing, that we're proposing, it has revenue in there to end the MCP. And I know you're all working very hard on it, and we appreciate that very much. Please adopt a budget that doesn't lay anybody off, doesn't furlough anybody, and restores full fire service, full paramedic service for the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Roy Stone.[1213.66][1213.66](Applause).
Good morning. Seventeen million people use the library. Eighteen million items were checked out. One-hundred-and-forty-two million times, database information was provided. Two thousand public computers were in almost constant use. Tens of thousands of research questions were accurately answered by professional librarians. Thousands of classrooms were visited, and so much more was done to improve your communities. Over forty thousand people responded to say, "Don't cut the library." They've signed their names, they've sent emails, and wrote to you. These are over three thousand copies of the postcards that were sent to Councilman Garcetti's office for you. In the box, there are fifteen thousand more letters of support for Tom Labonja's office. Will the library survive? The crisis that we all face can be dealt with in a negative and narrow view to a dark and dismal future for the next generation. Or a strong city council can stand for services for our residents and create a bright and full-functioning city. What we have heard today is a positive direction for our city, for the future of our residents. Together, as many of us have been saying for a long time, unions, workers, city council, we can save our libraries, we can save our recreation centers, we can save our fire department. Together, we can save our city. Thank you.[1300.22][1300.22](Applause).
Bob Schoonover.
Bob Schoonover, president, SCIU Local Seven-Two-One.[1314.82][1314.82](Cheering). You know, we started this process in January, and I think the number floating around then was six-hundred million or something. The layoff numbers, as was said here earlier, have been all over the place. And it seems like every time we get close to maybe being in the ballpark of a resolution, the numbers move around again. You know, I'm also here to say that public safety is absolutely police and fire, and it's also the civilian workforce of this city.[1346.66][1346.66](Cheering). You cannot have fire and police without the people that support them. And I'm also here to say that anybody that's ran into a pothole in the street that's about a foot deep knows what a safety item that is, or a tree falling on a car, or a tree laying in the street that somebody runs into. The libraries, the parks, we're just now starting to get a handle on our gang problem. We're going to cut public services, and we're going to destroy the progress we made. Let's do the smart thing here. We've come a long ways. Let's go a little bit further, and let's quit moving the targets around. Thank you.[1392.22][1392.22](Cheering).
Judy West. Judy West.
Hello. My name is Judy West. I'm the president of Local Seven-Forty-One, and I'm an employee with the Wreckin' Parks. The park employees care for and keep the children of L.A. safe and out of trouble, and our presence helps to keep the gangs out of the parks. After hearing that numerous employees are being considered for layoffs, my question is this: Did you even look at the smart budget that the union coalition gave you? If you had taken us seriously, things would be getting better budget-wise, not worse. Why aren't you allowing the employees to work with you instead of being against the employees and the families of L.A.? Thank you.
Alice Goff.
Good morning, Alice Goff, representing the clerical and support services employees, Ask Me Local Thirty-Ninety. You know, there is no denying that these are difficult times for all of us who provide services and/or live in the city of Los Angeles. Your employees, our members, are very anxious and concerned about their future, but just as importantly, about the work they do in serving our communities. We want to see the city prosper and be a place where the quality of life is not reduced to an unacceptable level. Our members have sacrificed greatly, allowing us to achieve meaningful structural changes in the city's workforce. Employees doing the work have given cost-saving ideas, and the coalition has presented a budget that maintains positions and services. We ask that a budget that is adopted has services and the staff to provide those services as its priority. As civilians, we recognize the need for our brothers and sisters in police and fire, but know that they cannot do what they need to do without us to support them. On behalf of my members and all workers in the city, I ask that we arrive at a budget that continues city services and one that is not balanced on the backs of workers. Thank you so much.[1544.04][1544.04](Applause).
Dave Bunjack.
Hello, my name's Dave Bunjack. I'm a principal storekeeper with the Department of General Services. I'm president of the L.A. chapter of Launa Local Seven-Seven-Seven, representing the blue-collar supervisors. You know, in the last three years as a supervisor, in my own section, I've lost a third of my employees, and still have had to maintain the same or even a greater level of service to the city, to the departments that my warehouses serve. My warehouses serve the wastewater treatment plants, the parts we supply directly go to repair, the treatment plant, and, excuse me, and we save the city money by preventing, by having the material on hand so that it can be repaired, and it prevents the city from having to pay fines, keeps the city from, saves the city from having to pay fines from the, to the EPA, to the state. And we don't pollute the bay, of course. The coalition got together, and we put together a budget. We supplied the budget with a lot of saving ideas, and we feel that that budget is a good way to keep services available to the city. I would like to encourage you to continue that process. I would like to also thank you for the good start that you did today with item one-A. We think that's a good start. We would like that process to continue, and we would like to save the city services and the families of the Los Angeles city workers from pain. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jackie Chillin. Jackie, your hands are full.
Yeah, good morning, counsel. My name is Jaclyn Chillin, and I am with Local Nine-O-One. And since we can't hold up signs, I don't know who I need to get these to. I want it, childrens have made these signs for you guys to save their parks and children's centers. I'm just here to remind you that our profession plays a big part in public safety. We work with different city agencies. We work with LAPD, LAFD, council members, and their representatives. This collaboration has tremendously impacted our parks and have turned them around. Our children and families can now go to parks and feel safe and recreate peacefully. If we go back to cutting services, we're going to go back to how parks were twenty years ago. We're going to have the gangs, the drugs, the prostitution, and that's going to take away from public safety. We all want public safety, and we all work together. Thank you for your time, and have a good day.
Thank you.[1733.44][1733.44](Cheering). Michael Davies.
Thank you, Michael Davies. I represent Engineers and Architects Association, and we represent five thousand city employees. Much credit is due to the expanded budget and finance committee for injecting some rationality and coherency into the proposed budget. The current-year budget sorely lacks those qualities. Obviously, there's more ground to make up. We are encouraged as well by motion one-A. The devil, of course, is going to be in the details, there are many details in the budget, and many devils lurking there. But if there are two broad themes, I'd like to present on behalf of my members. One is our urging of you to stop contracting out work that's most effectively and cost-effectively performed by your employees in the city, my members. Especially in the area of workers' comp, if I can mention that specifically. In addition, we still see furloughs included in the budget, that despite their questionable legality, the tens of millions of dollars of- furloughs. We brought up public safety. My members in the LAPD who work crime scenes and scientific investigations are being kept from completing their work. This is beginning to interfere with the ability of law enforcement to apprehend and prosecute criminals. Clearly something that's not tenable and has to be stopped. Ultimately, we make progress when we choose to not repeat the errors of the past. Furloughs were a particularly egregious error. What I would urge you to do, especially at this time, is don't simply try to mend furloughs, simply end them this time.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that was the group of labor representatives. We are now going to call on the folks, we probably have over a hundred cards here, from different representatives, city employees on this matter. We'll start with Tracy Shavera. Tracy Shavera. Followed by Luanna Allard. One minute on these folks so everyone gets a chance to speak. You have one minute, the clock is at the podium.
Good morning. Tracy Shavera, Central City Association. I'm here to ask you to retain the eighty positions in the Department of Building and Safety. The positions in question are funded by the general fund, not, excuse me, the positions in question are not funded by the general fund, they're funded by an enterprise fund. These positions are directly related to increased commercial activity. The department's report points to a projected increase in investment, yet there isn't sufficient staff to do the work necessary to move projects along. And this prevents the city from collecting badly needed revenue. So again, we want to remind you that the eighty positions in question, including engineers and inspectors, are revenue generators and are not funded through the city's general fund. So we ask you to retain them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Allard. Followed by Mike Massey.
Hi, my name is Luanna Allard and I live in Hillside Village. We need to keep the same attrition rate that they have for the police department for the fire department. When people retire, when they leave, you need to keep that rate going. Our services do not need to be cut. One of our seniors was on a morning walk with her small dog. A pit bull jumped out, attacked her and the dog. The dog didn't make it. Good thing that Fire Station 16 was there because they were first responders and took care of this woman, this senior. A few weeks back, most of you pledged in city council meeting that you would not vote for any cuts to eliminate paramedics in the fire department, not for any reason. The public is putting their safety in your hands and I pray that you'll keep your promise to the city residents. I hope that you are a person of your word. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Massey. Mike Massey. No, Mike Massey. Melane Ridgely. Melane Ridgely, followed by Dr. Clyde Williams.
Good morning. My name is Melanie Ridgely. I'm the prehospital care coordinator at Providence Holocaust Medical Center and I liaise between the medics and the nurses that work in the emergency room. I'm against the proposed cuts relating to the EMS captains. I was gonna tell you how busy they are and how much they do, which is true, but more importantly is the patient's safety and superior patient care. Eighty-five percent of the fire department calls are EMS or medical. The EMS captains have the expertise and knowledge to understand the nuances of medicine that fire captains do not have. For example, a fifty-year-old diabetic man with pain in his shoulder at 3:00 AM may be considered just a shoulder pain, but an EMS captain will understand that the patient needs to go to a facility that has expert cardiac care. Since I'm running out of time, the EMS captains are the glue that keep the prehospital and emergency department functioning as a team. If that glue is spread thin, it will fall apart, resulting in less than superior patient care that LA is known for. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Williams. No, Dr. Williams. Michael Lofton. Michael Lofton. Followed by Peter Sun. Michael Lofton and Peter Sun.
Good morning, chairman. My name is Mike Lofton and the reason why I'm here, I'm an over thirty-year employee of the Department of Water and Power and I hear you talking about the rights of the workers that have gainful employment. Well, a few days ago, they had Water and Power employees that were drinking on the job and they hadn't been punished. I stayed here and I've been punished and I have never had a sip of alcohol on the job in Water and Power. Their management has been unethical. I have a clean record, I have over thirty years of employment, they're stopping my retirement and I'm here to plead to the council members to correct this because the number one thing that a council member or the president or board of supervisors, the President of the United States, is to protect the constitutional rights of the citizen. That's more important than anything else and I think that's severely lacking here. Also, know of another matter that involves Mr. Carl Steadman, who's out of the Eighth District, who was falsely accused and his life has been ruined behind the lies of police officers and right now his future is damaged as far as his means of making a life.
Thank you, sir. Peter Sun. Followed by Joel Miller.
My name is Peter Sun. I'm a parent of a child at Palms Childcare After School Program run by the city. I'm here because the other day I get an email from the services saying that effective June eighteenth, they're closing. So let me ask you guys, is it easy to pick on the kids because they have no voice? Because they're not part of your constituents? It's easy, right? You don't have to worry about kids, they can't speak up, they don't vote, you guys aren't worried about them? Let me ask you a question. How many of you have kids that use the after-school program within the city? Raise your hands. Let the record show only one councilman raised their hand. Yeah, it's easy, you guys don't have to worry about it.
Thank you, sir.
Kids don't have a voice.
Thank you, sir. Joel Miller. Joel Miller. Edward Flores. Edward Flores. No, Joel Miller. Mr. Flores.
Good morning, council members. My name is Edward Flores. I'm a fourth-generation Alvera Street merchant and my family has been present there for seventy-seven years. The Budget and Finance Committee is aware of this, but not the entire council, and that is that Alvera Street has become self-sufficient at a great expense to the culture, to the city and to the personnel there. Our management structure is still top-heavy. Our manager has decided to maintain with a dozen or so employees several managers there and it is our position as merchants there that that can still be trimmed down. Also, the manager has decided to cut all funding for traditional events. Those events are for the community, for advancing cultural awareness and educational awareness. And we believe that the revenue there can be best utilized in a different manner where the manager, if he's given the directive to do so, can reinstate the funding for the traditional events as opposed to his desire to RFP out those events to a promoter who would just simply exploit them and use them for financial gain. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Nida. Kevin Nida. Followed by Scott Gold.
Hello, Mr. President, council. My name is Kevin Nida. I'm a member of the Los Angeles Fire Department, Local 112, and president of the California State Firefighters Association. This year is my thirtieth year, thirtieth year on this department and as a paramedic. I'm here this morning not to criticize management, but to make you aware of the consequences reducing the EMS captains from the sixteen offices to four. These cuts will drastically affect Councilmember Han's father's dream of the paramedic program forty years ago. Supervisor Han is known as the father of the paramedic program in his spot for us. Eleven years ago, we fought to keep these positions that were slated to be removed and we're here to get an ask keeping EMS captains. Prior to the MCP, we had sixteen fully functional offices. Currently, we have thirteen. We already are able to measure the inconsistent supervision, longer lead times for training and are unable to quickly respond, as we were before, to emergencies. In the eighties and nineties, we were plagued with EMS lawsuits and had no EMS quality improvement. Right now, we have a ratio of two-hundred-and-seventy resources to sixteen captains and thirteen with MCP. With the change, we'll have two-hundred-and-seventy to four. Unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Gold.
Good morning. My name is Scott Gold. I'm a twenty-eight-year veteran of the Los Angeles Fire Department. I've been a fire captain for fifteen years. Between eighty and ninety percent of the two thousand runs that the fire department runs are EMS-related, where there are only two to four working structure fires per day. Although the LAFD has always treated EMS as a nuisance and the LAF captain is green-headed children, EMS is the only entity within the LAFD that brings in millions of dollars per year. In nineteen ninety-eight, Chief Omachi proposed to expand the LAFD EMS system. LA County DHS and the physicians and nurses community demanded appropriate supervision. If we reduce the number of EMS captains any lower, we might as well just eliminate them all. Any further reduction will overwhelm the ability for an EMS captain to be effective. Thank you.
Ray Delgado. Ray Delgado. Followed by Leslie Simon.
Good morning. My name is Ray Delgado. I'm speaking on behalf of the proposed cut of sixteen fire inspector positions. I want to explain to the council and everyone here how important fire inspecting is. They're the ones who have been in the trenches. They've crawled through the smoke-filled rooms trying to get to the seat of the fire and trying to save life and property. These fire inspectors are responsible for checking that these exit doors open properly, that these sprinklers above us activate when there's heat that can save our city hall. These fire inspectors need to be saved. They save lives, they save property, and they desperately need to be saved, not cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Simon. Followed by Hillary George.
Hi, my name's Leslie Simon. I'm the organizing director for AFSCM District Council Thirty-Six, but I'm here today as a parent and a resident of Los Angeles. I have two children, ages eighteen and fifteen, and I am outraged that anybody in the city government would think that services such as are offered by the Department of Recreation and Parks are not essential services to the city. My children have been in city camps, in Camp Sharwood in Woodland Hills, since the age of five. They have been there every single summer. It is like a family, the city camps. My oldest son is gonna be a counselor this summer, my youngest son is a counselor in training. It is incredibly important, the community that is created by the city parks, by having the camps in the parks at the same location where you have the basketball and the baseball leagues, it becomes a complete family for the children and to take those services away from our kids is an outrage. And I seriously hope that you consider not using the economic crisis to eliminate essential city services. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary George. Hillary George. Tina Choi. Tina Choi. Followed by Johnny Torres. Johnny Torres will be after Ms. Choi.
Good morning, council members. Tina Choi, T. Choi and Associates. I deal in development consulting, specifically permits and expediting, and I'm here to actually share some real statistics with you. Obviously, I'm in favor of keeping the eighty positions of building and safety. This week alone, we facilitated over two-hundred-thousand dollars of plan check fees to the department. That significant number is something that truly demonstrates that these are revenue-creating positions. Real-life example, we had a apartment developer who has a vacant lot, went bankrupt and now the dirt lot is underdeveloped and vacant. A new developer came and the lender required plan check preliminary assessment. That was done by four plan checkers and three inspectors in one day, which then led to the lender actually releasing the funds. We also have an agricultural manufacturing company who needed the help of four plan checkers and four inspectors to do some prelim for the loan amount. That was approved and it created eighty jobs. So please do not get rid of these positions.
Johnny Torres. Johnny Torres. Barry Johnson. Barry Johnson. Diana Williams. Diana Williams. Barry Johnson. Pamela Garcia. Pamela Garcia.
Good morning, city council. I'm here representing Wreckin' Parks and actually under childcare. I'm actually a parent of my youngest child who actually is employed at Weneka Childcare, which is part of the slated expected cut for childcare. And I'm really hurt by the cuts. You people don't realize how devastating it is to the public. The parents are really trying to work with us, asking us what it takes to write letters to you, asking help in finding other ways of funding the program because it is much needed for the city. I'm really hurt by the fact that you guys are still considering this. It is really imperative for us in the communities to have these childcare centers. We work really well. Because it was a licensed program, it is really efficient and it helps to enable these children to be prepared to go into public sector.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terrence Rice. Terrence Rice. Loretta Kraft. Loretta Kraft. Terrence Rice. Mary Marr. Sal Valenzuela. Your name, ma'am?
Mary Marr.
Mary Marr, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Mary Marr and I work as a clerk at the Durant Branch Library. Librarians and clerks, librarians, clerks and messenger clerks are vital to keep the libraries running properly and to provide adequate services to the public. If volunteers are used to replace the work of library staff, it will be a dangerous mistake. Volunteers are not librarians. They do not have a master's degree in library science, nor do they require the skills or knowledge. Volunteers are not clerks and messenger clerks. Clerks and messenger clerks require substantial training. Then there is the privacy issue. I am a city employee and also I am a patron and I would not want a volunteer to have access to my records. Librarians, clerks and messenger clerks are essential to keep all libraries functioning properly. Save our libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Your name, sir?
Sal Valenzuela.
Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I am from Mastick Rising Gang Intervention Services here in Los Angeles and I'm opposed to the budget cut that you're opposing, putting on us. Please do not put the budget cut through. You put a cut in peace if you do. We're limited in resources as it is. We are the ones, first ones in and the last ones out, to go and help these youths in the community. We're maintaining the peace, we're assisting with the city. Please do not put a budget cut on us. Could you put a cut on that, you put a cut on peace. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Justin Stallings. Justin Stallings. Skip Townsend. Skip Townsend. Terrence Rice. Loretta Kraft. None of those folks are here? Sir, your name?
Justin Stallings.
Okay, Justin, go ahead, sir.
My name is Justin Stallings. I'm the project director for the prevention agency in the Seventy-Seventh, Graham District, Florence and Graham District. Just wanting to bring a sense of kind of, get you guys to appeal to the idea of leaving a child behind. Although you do have to do what you have to do to make this budget work, there will be children that will be left behind and that can have a ripple effect. One child lost has the opportunity to go out and recruit other children to do things that we're trying to prevent them from doing. Not to mention the effect that will-
Good morning, city council. I'm here representing Wreckin' Parks and actually under childcare. I'm actually a parent of my youngest child who actually is employed at Weneka Child Care, which is part of the slated expected cut for childcare, and I'm really hurt by the cuts. You people don't realize how devastating it is to the public. The parents are really trying to work with us, asking us what it takes to write letters to you, asking help in finding other ways of funding the program because it is much needed for the city. I'm really hurt by the fact that you guys are still considering this. It is really imperative for us in the communities to have these childcare centers. We work really well. Because it was a licensed program, it is really efficient, and it helps to enable these children to be prepared to go into public sector.
Thank you. Terrence Rice. Terrence Rice. Loretta Kraft. Loretta Kraft. Terrence Rice. Mary Marr. Your name, ma'am?
Mary Marr.
Mary Marr. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. My name is Mary Marr, and I work as a clerk at the Durant Branch Library. Librarians and clerks, librarians, clerks, and messenger clerks are vital to keep the libraries running properly and to provide adequate services to the public. If volunteers are used to replace the work of library staff, it will be a dangerous mistake. Volunteers are not librarians. They do not have a master's degree in library science, nor do they require the skills or knowledge. Volunteers are not clerks and messenger clerks. Clerks and messenger clerks require substantial training. Then there is the privacy issue. I am a city employee, and also I am a patron, and I would not want a volunteer to have access to my records. Librarians, clerks, and messenger clerks are essential to keep all libraries functioning properly. Save our libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Your name, sir?
Sal Venezuela.
Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I am from Mastick Rising, Gang Intervention Services here in Los Angeles, and I'm opposed to the budget cut that you're putting on us. Please do not put the budget cut through. You put a cut in peace if you do. We're limited in resources as it is. We are the ones, first ones in and the last ones out, to go and help these youths in the community. We're maintaining the peace. We're assisting with the city. Please do not put a budget cut on us. Could you put a cut on that? Put a cut on peace. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Justin Stallings. Justin Stallings. Skip Townsend. Skip Townsend. Terrence Rice. None of those folks are here? Sir, your name?
Justin Stallings.
Okay, Justin, go ahead, sir.
My name is Justin Stallings. I'm the project director for the prevention agency in the Seventy-seventh Gramm, Florence and Gramm District. Just wanting to bring a sense of kind of, get you guys to appeal to the idea of leaving a child behind. Although you do have to do what you have to do to make this budget work, there will be children that will be left behind, and that can have a ripple effect. One child lost has the opportunity to go out and recruit other children to do things that we're trying to prevent them from doing, not to mention the effect it will have on the intervention agencies. Us as a prevention agency, we do a whole different scope of practice as far as working with the youth. The intervention is, this would really, really affect their ability to be out there and doing what we need them to do as a group. So I know you guys have to do what you have to do, but I hope that you all thought this through very thoroughly.
Thank you, sir. Carol Kialoa. Sir, your name?
I'm Skip Townsend.
Skip, go ahead, sir.
All right. I'm Skip Townsend. I work with the gang intervention programs in south-central Los Angeles, and what we do in the gang intervention not only is reduce violence and stop the murders and retaliation or homicides, but we also work with the young people, and we send them a message every day. Every day, we work with these young people. We change their mindset, their behavior, their attitude, change the environment that they're in. We help them change the way they look at life. So that's the message we send to them every day as we give them hope. So we come here today to ask you, what message are you going to send to them when you cut the budget? Is the message is there is no hope, or is the message is you're going to support what we do in the intervention prevention programs and support the youth, our future of tomorrow? And these are the youth with us. These are the youth with us right here.
Thank you. Carol Kialoa. Chris Kraft. Stan Mohammed. Stan Mohammed. Radel Flores. Stan Mohammed, go ahead, sir. And Radel Flores will follow.
Yes, I'm Stan Mohammed, the executive director of Helper Foundation, also known as Venice Two Thousand. We was here Tuesday, and obviously minds are made up. However, I would ask that this cut, if it has to happen, be a temporary cut. I would also ask that those who know that the intervention services in your district is working, that we come together and begin to look at other alternatives to raise the necessary funds so we don't have to take a major hit. Of course, we know that this intervention work is a direct connection to public safety, and we know that LAPD is also a direct connection to public safety, but we also know that the intervention services is a complement to LAPD. Whenever we can see these young people's lives being changed, and whenever we can see young people stepping out of gangs, and we know that the intervention prevention services is needed in this city, and we know also that this is the game capital of our country. So let's see what we can do to deal with the alternatives to raise the necessary funds so we don't have to take a cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary St. George. Hillary St. George.
Radel Flores, librarian and resident of Los Angeles. I have the public comments from your constituents with envelopes for several of you personally. Keep it open for Diary of a Wimpy Kid, age seven. P.S. Please, once upon a time, a gift was given to you from those before you. Pass forward this gift for our future. Save the library. Consider a future where all our youth learn their English from internet chatrooms. Give the library their books. Don't take away the library. It is so very important to me. Most kids can't afford to have a computer or books. I'm an eighth-grade student with no home computer. I need the library. L.A. public libraries are a city treasure, and they need to be protected, not cut. I'd like to give these to the...
Sergeant Arms will take that from you, ma'am. Linda Dent. Linda Dent. Linda Dent. Andy Gomez. Andy Gomez. Are you Linda Dent coming up?
Yes.
Okay, Linda. Thank you. Vice President.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Linda Dent. I'm the vice president of Seven Two One. I am an L.A. County worker, but I also represent the city workers for my union. And one thing I know for sure, you need to listen to the members. They're the ones that's doing the work. They know where the money's at. They know how to save the budget. You need to pay attention. You should not mess around with their retirement. You should not lay them off. There should be no more work, fellows, and for sure, leave our farmers and our policemen alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Gomez. Andy Gomez. Jeffrey Cooperton.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Caperton, Controller for People Coordinated Services of Southern California who provides the gang reduction and youth development services in the Newton area. The state of California Department of Alcohol and Drugs, through a comprehensive study asking the question, does treatment work, has determined that for every one dollar spent for treatment, seven dollars are saved in other areas. We at People Coordinated Services believe that there are similar savings in areas such as police investigations and graffiti removal to be realized with continued support of gang reduction and youth development efforts. Therefore, we encourage you to consider the savings to be realized, not to mention the quality of citizens that can be developed with continued funding of the gang reduction and youth development efforts at current levels. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Steven Catalano. Followed by Alan Pachek.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of council. Steve Catalano from Kendall Gagin. Here in support of the Department of Building and Safety retaining the eighty positions or so. We have several large projects in the pipeline and some soon-to-be, and those projects, once they're online, will be creating a significant revenue source to the city. Beverly Hills BMW, for example, is moving from the city of Beverly Hills into the city of Los Angeles, and as soon as they start moving the Beamers, we're going to see a revenue stream based on the city's unique automobile sales tax. So we're strongly in support of keeping those positions open. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Pachek. Followed by Hillary St. George.
Thank you, members of council. My name is Alan Pachek. I'm a storekeeper at the Department of General Services. These are my coworkers, brothers and sisters. These are the first faces of the workforce of L.A. Layoffs and furloughs are like pulling a pin on a live grenade. Not only are the people laid off and furloughed affected, their families are affected also, and the families of your constituents. When those services are cut, think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hillary St. George. Louis Trinidad. Janie Watkins. Mr. Trinidad?
Yes.
Thank you. After Ms. Trinidad, Ms. Watkins. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. I am Louis Trinidad, president of Motor Transport Chapter. I am here to clarify something. I heard something that disturbed me. The members of Three Forty-seven are members of SEIU. We direct our elected officials from SEIU to deal with you, to deal with you, to deal with the mayor. Whatever they're doing, they're doing at the request of the members. The members back up our elected officials of the union. So when they're saying that the furloughs need to end, I'm letting you know our members are looking at it very seriously because they do need to end. I just had a long talk with the members of Motor Transport Division, and they say a lot of them are in deep financial problems. LA City isn't in financial problems. They are in financial problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Watkins. Janie Watkins.
I just want you to know I do have a life. I am here today again. I brought the tenth fiscal report for the Watts Towers, especially for the Finance Committee, so that you have the documentation of what actually goes on there. There's statistics, there's programming, there's budget as you go into your budget talks next week. It is crucial that this information is given to you because we have yet to date given any information as to what is going to happen with our Watts Towers Art Center. Just like grid, the Towers offer service to community that is underserved in green space and in programming for children. This city cannot afford to cut these programs for people. I stand in support of the Fire Department for grid and for the children that go to the childcare centers. We need you to be conscious about this. No one can afford for you to cut the network that keeps this city safe. Please do not cut this because your whole community needs these services for this city to be strong and educationally strong to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Will Harris. Will Harris. Will Harris. Dawn Brown. Dawn Brown. Mr. Harris? Okay, Dawn Brown, you'll be right after Ms. Harris, who's right behind you, sir, ma'am. Go ahead, sir, and then we'll get to Dawn Brown.
Thank you, council. I'm here representing the Brotherhood Crusade. Our grid program is in Southwest Two Agency, and I'm here to implore you not to cut the budgets. We serve over two hundred kids and more. All the providers here, our hours of operation may stay eight to five, but this is a twenty-four-hour job. I mean, we get calls in nights to go out and help our kids. So I'm imploring you not to cut the budget. Increase the budget. We need to continue working with our kids. This is a prevention program, and that's what we want to do. We want to prevent kids from joining gangs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Brown?
Hello. My name is Dawn L. Brown. I'm the executive director of Girls in Gangs. Today, we are here in support of the many community-based organizations who receive grid funding to provide youth violence intervention and prevention services. We are here to give voice to over ten thousand children whose lives have been lost as a result of gang violence, as well as those whose lives have been saved as a result of tremendous work by community violence prevention advocates. The proposed budget cuts to grid direct services could affect an estimated one thousand to eleven hundred youth. This budget cut could cause a heavy burden to CBOs that will result in a decrease in rehabilitative services and an increase in arrests and incarcerations that could cost L.A. three times the money the city is attempting to save. The current economic crisis has drastically affected Los Angeles, and we understand that we are facing a budget deficit that requires tough decisions to be made. However, the safety and well-being of our city's children is imperative, so as you vote for the city's proposed budget cuts, please consider the lives of the decisions you are affecting.
Michael Porco. And after Michael Porco will be Laura Dawn.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Porco, and I work with the ADAP Agency, one of the grid recipients for the prevention services. And I'm here to say that I hope that you vote for no cuts to the grid program, and here's why. I understand there might be a need to spread the cuts out and for everyone to do their part, but you've got to understand that for the grid program, one, it just started. We haven't even got the opportunity to show the results that we can show, and we hope that you will give us that opportunity. Two, you heard about public safety being a core issue in this city. Well, prevention services ties right into that. If we can keep the kids safe, if we can keep them off the streets as they grow up, they will not go into a life of crime. And finally, for these budget cuts, that will result in two counselors being cut, two counselors that represent fifty to sixty kids, kids that need our support. So vote no for the cuts and yes for the kids. Thank you very much.
Laura Dawn. Beth Rubin.
Hi. My name is Beth Rubin. I'm a young adult librarian at the Venice Branch Library. The cuts proposed to the library will have devastating effects on our profession, the services we provide, and the... Didn't bring my glasses. And services we provide to our city as a whole. As a young adult librarian, I'm especially concerned about the teens in our communities, many who are underserved and at risk. The proposed layoffs of library staff educated and dedicated to working with teens will decimate the services we provide and the teens we reach every day. When balancing the budget, please, please remember our teens and the valuable role the Los Angeles public library staff plays in their lives. Please help us keep the integrity of library services to our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Blanca Ventura. Blanca Ventura. And after Ms. Ventura will be Brenda Shockley.
Good morning. My name is Blanca Ventura. I'm here representing the youth in grid program in Pacoima, and I feel if the city council cuts down anything, it's going to affect us in a major way. For example, if the city cuts down money, that would mean that there would be less case managers, and that, let's say that that one case manager could talk some sense into that teenager and make them understand that they can be someone in their life, someone positive. Another example is if the city council cuts down activities, there would be more majority of teenagers in the street. That would mean more teenagers at risk of gang, drugs, and alcohol. That's what this program is about, to keep that away. I've learned that there's consequences in life to the choices I make. Make the right choice, and please, don't make me suffer the consequences.
Laura Dawn. Your name, ma'am?
My name is Brenda Shockley.
Brenda, go ahead, ma'am.
President of Community Build. We are the lead agency for both the prevention and intervention program in the Baldwin Village, Council District Eight. I was here on Tuesday when we had the public comment and, like everyone else, shared how we did not want the cuts. It wasn't until I stayed beyond and heard the legislative analysts state that city-wide the cut would be one point four million dollars in savings to the city. That one point four million dollars could cripple any of our agencies because we are in a position where we are already serving as many as we can for as little as we can. If ever there was a moment that was penny-wise and pound-foolish, it is saving one point four million dollars and putting thousands of youth at risk. Thank you.
Steve Martinez. Steve Martinez. Steve Martinez. Arvis Jones.
Thank you. My name is Arvis Jones. I'm the assistant director of the Center for Grief and Loss for Children. The last time I was here was you were offering a reward for my son's killers who was killed in mistaken identity. I have programs at nine middle schools to help these children to learn how to handle their feelings, but more importantly, when I was working with the police to find my son's killers, they came up against a stone wall and told me I had to talk to the gang intervention workers to get some information that they couldn't get. The grid program and the gang intervention program is extremely important to our city as the way they cooperate with LAPD. As you all heard before, our children would be on the streets and into gang involvement, and plus, it would cost more to put them in jail. Please do not cut these programs.
Ivan Chavez. Ivan Chavez. Ivan Chavez. Robert Hernandez. Robert Hernandez. Marilyn Smithson. Marilyn Smithson. Jessica Vasquez. Sir, your name?
Robert Hernandez.
Robert Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Hello, city council. My name's Robert Hernandez. I'm with the Hollenback Remote and Gardens Grid, which consists of VIP Violence Intervention Program, which I'm the program manager, Legacy L.A., Bario Youth and Family Services, Aztecs Rising, and Seau. I'm just here to let you know that our youth today cannot afford these cuts. The grid money has directly allowed us to service this neglected population. I'm talking about the youth who are exposed to high rates of gang violence. I'm talking about where literature states twenty-three percent of trauma exposure. We're talking about the same... We're talking about the same rates of trauma that our troops in our communities in Afghanistan and Iraq are exposed to daily. This is what our youth are faced with every day. So with these cuts, what are we attempting to send to our youth? The message?
Sir, thank you.
We need to invest in our youth.
Thank you, sir. Your name?
My name is Jessica Vasquez.
Go ahead.
So I come from Youth Justice Coalition, and I heard that you guys are trying to take the help from us. Um, tell...
Speak.
I'm a little nervous, sorry. Um, so, um...
Tell them what they do. You say it, Mary, say it.
You've got one minute.
Sorry.
All right, just speak.
The grid program helps us to, um, like, well, you guys are trying to take the help from us. Then I ask you, if it was your kids getting shot and killed, would you guys still cut the budget? If so, how can we sleep at night? That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, hello, everybody. Steve Martinez, New Directions for Youth. I'm really urging very hard to please, when it comes to social services that are going directly, providing service to the youth and families of the city of LA, that we really think twice before we cut there because when you're in a middle recession, these agencies need not have their funds cut, but maybe expanded due to the services they're going to need to provide in our city because there's more people being unemployed, there are more youth facing struggles and hardships. These are the ones that we need to look out for for the future. Thank you very much, and I urge you not to cut those resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Carpenter? How about Jeffrey Caperton? Wendy Brown? Ann Marie McGinnity? Ann Marie McGinnity? Ann Marie?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Ann Marie McGinnity, and I'm here, I represent the Department of Animal Services. I'd like to speak on behalf of the canvassing unit. I feel that they are vital, and they should not be cut because they have already generated over $100,000 this year since January of 2010. They provide public service, they provide public safety, they provide information to the public about licensing fees, and they will continue to generate over $200,000 or $300,000 for the city at this time. It doesn't make sense to replace them with officers who make double their salaries at a time when furloughs are handed out, there's already a shortage of officers in the shelters. They make money seven days a week, and we need them to continue to help support the community with public safety, to enforce the city policies, and most of all, to remember that they are cost neutral. They do not cost the city money to help it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Erica Silverman? Erica Silverman? And after Erica Silverman will be Michael Ramos. Michael Ramos?
My name is Erica Silverman. I'm an adult librarian at the Edendale Branch Library, and I'm a children's book author with over 20 award-winning books published. I'm concerned about a misconception about the library that's going on right now, and that is that the library is an empty building, that if you put some books in it, and you have some computers and a couple of staff people, you can throw in some volunteers and it'll all work. When I was growing up in New York City, we had something called the automat, where you could go in, put a quarter in a little box, and a little thing of spaghetti came out. The library is not the automat. The library is the people who work in it. The librarians are passionate about literacy and information literacy. We're helping people find jobs, we're helping people get their resumes out, we're helping children learn how to read, we're running summer programs all of the time. The library, the librarians and the staff support are what make the library work, and volunteers are not going to cut it. I want to take a minute, off subject, to commend you, Council, on taking a stand against the terrible Arizona law.
Thank you.
And I ask you now to take a stand for the workers of the city of LA in the same way.
Mary Ann Peters?
Thank you.
Mary Ann Peters? I'll remind you folks, you have one minute, so everyone can be able to have a chance to speak. Mary Ann Peters?
My name is Mary Ann Peters, and I have lived in the LA area for over 50 years. You people are facing exactly the opposite of a situation we had in the West LA area 30, 40 years ago. The junior high schools and the high schools cooperated with the police in a truancy program. After they began that program and while they ran it, daytime burglaries dropped between 30 and 40% as a direct result of having aimless teenagers off the streets. What you are doing now in facing, in considering the cuts of parks and libraries and the various services that keep kids busy is reversing that trend. I dread the possibility of the statistics we're going to face if we have a lot of summer teenagers running around loose with no summer programs. Thank you.
Juan Luis Herrera?
How you doing? My name is Michael Ramos Morales. I'm a student at YJC. I'm standing here today to say that I'm against budget cuts for gang interventions because gang interventions help us a lot. I live in the city of Compton. To me, that city is where your dreams get snatched away from you. Gang intervention has helped me a lot since I came out of jail. They helped me with work sources, they helped me out with school, transportation, everything. So I'm here to say, please do not cut budget cuts for gang interventions. They're really helpful. In the city where I live at, I've been shot at, I've been everything, and gang intervention has made me feel more positive than negative. I'm just here to say that, please don't cut budget cuts, and with all the respect to everybody in this room, I would like to, I would like to show something that you guys do not go through at night, and you guys may take it disrespectful, but it's just what I see every day at night and what I hear every night. I'm sorry for the... You guys do not go through...
Juan Luis Herrera? Jacob Miller? After Mr. Miller will be Wendy McPherson.
Hello, my name is Jacob Miller. I've been a member of Department of Animal Services for the last eight and a half years, going on nine in August. I'm here also today to talk about our canvassers and how important of a role they play. Mr. Garcetti, you had said that the best ideas are coming from the employees, among those was licensed canvassing. Well, you know, our department wants to let go of these canvassers on the 18th. They want to, they want can that whole operation. This is something that is the most cost-efficient way to gather licenses. If the canvassers aren't there, you're going to have animal control officers who won't have time to collect these licenses. We're going to be going back into the dark ages of our department. We also operate as early intervention for youth as well in our own little way because when these canvassers go to the over 100,000 homes every year on average, they talk to people about how to care for animals, and we all know that abuse is a crime of opportunity. It's important that we instill in the youth and these families what the proper responsibilities of pet guardianship are, and these canvassers provide that day in and day out, and they also make what they are paid.
Thank you. Wendy McPherson, followed by Mario Tabarez.
My name is Wendy McPherson. I'm a young adult librarian at Echo Park Branch Library. I'm also an active member of AFSCME 2626, and in every hearing, we hear about the bond rating, and if, if there are, are banks and the bond rating companies telling the city of LA, "You better lay off people, you better cut those salaries, you better cut that expensive pension fund, or we're going to lower your bond, your bond rating," who is running the city of Los Angeles? This sounds like Greece. We have brothers and sisters from unions, from, from the firefighters, from parks and rec. We won't be divided. There are choices to make, but it's not a choice whether it's me as a librarian, or the firefighter, or a civil service, police worker. It's a matter of how we spend our money. You should have us look at the books, line by line. The union can figure it out.
Yes, that's me. My name is Mario Tabarez, and I'm a counselor for the Grid Program, the 77th II Division, and I'm just here to let you guys know of the changes that I've seen as a counselor. I've serviced 30 families in my caseload, and of those 30, over half of them have shown improvements in grades, academics, behavior, and dramatic changes in the family, the family's lives. I do believe that these services are helping. This program has only been in existence for 12 months, but I ask you this question. How much more change do you think that we will provide to the community if you guys promise us three years? You know, we'll be able to provide excellent services to these communities, and you guys talk about change, but, you know, I really think you guys need to continue investing if you guys want to truly see a change in these communities. That's the only way we're going to be able to help and provide the adequate services that these communities need. Thank you.
Jim McQuiston? Jim McQuiston? Humberto Jimenez? Humberto Jimenez? Michael Ramos? Are you Humberto or Michael?
Humberto.
Pardon me?
Humberto.
Humberto, okay. Go ahead. We've got a hand mic for you right over here with the sergeant arms.
Hi, my name is... Yes, my name is Humberto Jimenez. I'm a case manager for a helping foundation. Today is, to me, the sad day because today, we are treating our kids that it is no longer important to save youth's lives. I mean, I don't know how on Sunday you guys can go to church and ask God for forgiveness when you are normally killing our kids. By cutting the budget, you're killing lives. 18 years ago, I was shot and put in this woods at Guts of Games. If it was gang intervention back then, I probably wouldn't be in this woods today, and I use that experience to help these kids. I'm a college graduate now. I could go and get another job, but these kids can't go get other services if you guys cut the budget. So you guys are not hurting us, you guys are hurting the kids. And like this younger lady said earlier, if it was your kids getting shot and killed, would you guys still cut the budget? Thank you very much.
Steve Bly? Steve Bly? Steve Bly? William?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is William Benchoff. I'm a library assistant at the Los Angeles Public Library Central Library. I work with the Federal Depository Collection. It's a collection of free publications that the federal government sends to the library. They get aud, the library gets audited by them every five years, and I'm afraid that with the cuts and that are taking place, that we may not be, re, keep our status as a federal depository library. In the, in the, in the federal depository library collection, recreation, history, archaeological, maps, patents, all sorts of public information that the public deserves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is LaShawn Wiggers, and I'm a childcare professional, also known as a childcare director. In, in your, each of our facilities represents over 1,000 children that service, that services Los Angeles, 1,000 families, over 1,000 families, that your decision to cut our programs will affect. In each of your field offices, you will receive today or tomorrow a poster from all of the children in your programs that they want their program saved. Their future is in your hands. That's, that's the message. They don't deserve the things that are going on right now. They did not cause this budget. Please don't put the budget on their backs. Please save their future. Thank you.
Michael Murray? Michael Murray? Crystal Dixon? You, Michael? Following you now, Michael, be Crystal Dixon.
Good morning to all you. My name's Michael Murray. I am a member of the Youth Justice Coalition, also a former gang member. I'm here to support prevention and intervention. The youth don't need these cuts, we need support. If it wasn't for gang intervention and prevention, I'd be in the streets, I'd probably be in jail right now doing, because of things I did. Thankfully, the gang intervention, I'm here, I'm alive, I've changed my life around, and I'm helping my communities. It's, I don't see how you guys can even think about cutting this, you know? This, this affects the youth. You guys say the youth are the future. If you guys cut this, our future is lost. So please, invest in our future. Thank you.
Crystal Dixon?
That's me. The only reason a person would consider cutting the budget for gang intervention is because it's not needed in their neighborhoods. In my neighborhood, we greatly need the gang intervention workers that are there for us. So I would appreciate if you guys would consider not taking that from us. We really need this, and you guys are really taking something special from us, away from us. And you guys never know, we have a school in Inglewood, California, and the gang intervention workers help us so much. We don't have school police. School police don't understand the troubles that we go through like the gang intervention workers do. When we call them, they're there. When, when we need help, they're there. They help us on Wednesdays, they counsel our students, and they help us out so much. You guys really need to consider not cutting the budget for our gang intervention workers.
Armando Chavez? Armando Chavez?
I'm here on behalf of SEAL SOTL and SEAL Gang Intervention. Well, if it wasn't for them right now, I wouldn't be here. I'd probably be in jail right now. Right now, I'm looking at eight years, I'm on trial, and if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be here right now, probably be serving that time right now. And they helped me out through a lot, ever since I attended, I'm working with them, they've been helping me a lot and keeping me out of trouble. And that's why I'm asking, please don't cut the budget, you know? That's it.
Steve Ischino? Steve Ischino?
Good morning. I'm Captain Steve Ischino. The Port of Los Angeles is the number one terrorist target in this nation. 40% of the nation's gross national product goes through the Port of LA and Long Beach. Eliminating fully-staffed positions on Squad 48 in San Pedro and Squad 87 in the Valley will result in a significant increase in response times and seriously reduce our ability to provide critical information in a timely manner to incident commanders. Hazardous material squads save lives, reduce potential threats to the public by making timely decisions. Rapid response to dangerous chemical spills, industrial accidents, and terrorist attacks simply cannot be compromised. Our message is simple: reductions in specialized personnel and apparatus to critical responses is dangerous and could have devastating consequences to life and property. Thank you.
Thank you. Cory Beasley? Cory Beasley. Cory Beasley. Followed by Ivan Curry.
Hello, my name is Cory Beasley. I'm a student of YJC and I'm here to talk to you guys about cutting the, cutting the budget for the gang intervention workers, 'cause they're, they're there to help us and they, they keep us safe throughout the day from others, from like gangs coming up to the school and pressing people. They keep us, like, they make sure we're safe, pretty much, and, like, they're there for us. And if you cut the budget for them, our future could go to waste, 'cause somebody could get shot at the corner by the school or something. We just had an incident like last week and they were there to help us, so don't cut the budget. That's all.
Ivan Curry. Michael Ramos. Yvonne Cruz. Emily Goldkoff. Paul Horn. Your name, sir? Okay. Why don't you bring Laura up with you?
What's that?
Is Laura Horn, is that related?
No, she had to leave.
Okay, right.
Um, I'm a parent here in, uh, Los Angeles. I'm here to talk to you about the proposed budget cuts to childcare services. Um, everybody's budgets are getting tighter and I don't think that, uh, we should be considering cutting these programs. I think we should be considering expanding them. We need a, we have a community of families where, where two parents work, um, without the services. We have to take time off work. We can't be earning money, spending money in our communities, providing tax dollars for our communities. Um, we feel that, um, these programs can be restructured to make them more solid. We've had discussions about how to do that. Uh, we know that some cuts need to be made, but the programs can be, can be changed around so that they can almost be, even be profitable. We have, we have a center that has, um, over a two-year waiting list, that's at one center. I don't know, I can't speak for the other centers, but I know that these programs can be made more profitable for the city and there's a dire need for them. We, um, we need, we need to have our, we need to have help having our kids taken care of during the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Bishop Claudia Humphrey. Bishop Claudia Humphrey. Lourdes Caracosa. Lourdes Caracosa. Are you Lourdes, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Lourdes Caracosa with Alma Family Services. We are the prevention program for the Boyle Heights community and it is a shame that once again, we need to be here to advocate for our youth. And we're not advocating for a program or a service. We're advocating to keep our children alive and to give them the tools to survive the violence in our communities. We are working with LAPD. We have partners that mentor and provide activities. We are working with our local politicians and our intervention programs. The schools are in support and in partnership with us. This is the most effective service and program out there in the city of L.A. and we wanna cut it. We wanna cut the opportunity that this is giving our youth to stay alive and to build the communication with their families. I don't understand that. Please rethink this and rethink the opportunities you're gonna take away from our youth.
Thank you, ma'am. Christopher Trujillo. Christopher Trujillo. Rafaela Moore. Rafaela Moore. Marilyn Smitsen. Adele Wallace. And then Jonathan Pike. Or, it's P-I-K-E. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Adele Wallace. I'm a librarian at the John C. Fremont Branch. And members of the city council, I want to entreat you, please do not balance the budget on the backs of the poor, which is what is happening. And, and I'm referring specifically to our parks and our libraries, because although we all make use of those, of those services, people with limited means, it's absolutely vital to them to have a place to go for recreation, to have a place to go for internet access, for advice on finding jobs. And I would like to know who on this council will have the courage to stand up and say, if we wanna have a decent, vital city that serves its citizens, we're going to have to pay for it. And the way to pay for it is through taxes. Yes, we need to raise our taxes.
Thank you, ma'am. Roxanne Rice. Roxanne Rice.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Petrie. I'm a YA librarian at the Silver Lake...
Your name, sir?
Jonathan Petrie.
Go ahead.
All right. I'm the YA librarian at the Silver Lake Branch. Uh, it doesn't make any sense that you wanna close the libraries, 'cause you just built this one recently. Uh, I gave six suggestions to council, 'cause he knows them. Uh, you guys implemented four of them. We're implementing four of them. I have two more I wanna give to him and he's gonna take a look at them. I also brought with me, um, since Bill Romansall wants us to do volunteers, I brought my volunteer application to be the city councilperson for District Eleven. I brought my city coun- I brought my volunteer application to be the mayor of Los Angeles. And also, I brought my volunteer application to be the field representative, which is the mayor's daughter's job, because she gets paid more than I do, even though she didn't go to college. So I figured the best way to save money is to let her go, so she can go back to college and give me that job, since I actually deserve it, 'cause I, with the college, I have a master's. Thank you.
Roberto Nunez. Roberto Nunez. Followed by Margie Guzman.
Hello, my name is Roberto Nunez and I work for the Boyle Heights Grid Prevention through Alma Family Services. I'm here to let you know that over the last school year, we made some significant progress at the local middle schools. As to where before, um, electives were woodshop, sewing, metal shop, we've now created a violence prevention elective at the middle schools. And I ask you to please don't cut that progress. We've established strong relationships with community organizations, strong relationships with city officials, with LAPD, with all our partners. And we're seeing progress. We're seeing that these programs work and we're asking you to help us. All over the country, cities are looking at Los Angeles. The new model to gang prevention is working with LAPD, working with the police, but also with community organizations. We are that new model and everybody's looking at Los Angeles. And let's show that Los Angeles can do it and can pull through. Thank you very much.
Arnold Sachs. Arnold Sachs. And Margie Guzman.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. A matter of semantics. I imagine the community-based policing that you're always talking about, the gang intervention is part of community-based policing, but they're not police officers, but they're part of the policing program. Mayor doesn't wanna cut any police officers, but he's willing to cut policing programs. That doesn't make sense. And it's a matter of semantics. You heard the chair of the Budget and Finance Committee say, well, it was the motion that we discussed regarding positions. We didn't discuss layoffs, because that wasn't in the motion. But in council chambers and council meetings and council discussions, all we heard about were layoffs, layoffs, layoffs. Mr. Smith brought it up, Ms. Honest Jan Perry brought it up, Councilman, uh, Corcoran questioned where the four thousand came up, it's all layoffs. And then you just heard volunteer councilmen, Councilman Parks. Seven weeks ago, the police chief was here, talked about murders costing four million dollars per person. City council says one point...
Margie Guzman. Your time's up, Mr. Sachs. Margie Guzman. Michael Alcazar. Michael Alcazar. Elizabeth Lopez. Elizabeth Lopez. Kathleen Boyle. Kathleen Boyle. Any of those folks here? We'll keep going. We've got names here, folks. We'll get to you. We're trying to call them that we have. Tony Zepeda? Or Zepeda? Tony? Zepeda? Ricardo Mora? Ricardo Mora? Your name, sir? Your name?
Tony Zepeda.
Zepeda? Very good, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tony Zepeda and, uh, here today, we have a lot of young people representing your districts. Uh, I'm with SAYA, I'm the director of our gang intervention programs in Ramona Gardens, El Sereno, um, Boyle Heights, Newton, and Seventy-Seven Florence Graham. Um, there's a large number of young people that need these services. We have a, a large number of people that are victims of crime in this area, but we also have a lot of positive stories of young people that changed their lives. And we ask you here today, don't play the political game with us. We don't have time to sit here and hear this between you guys. We're, we're dealing with lives. Help us with that. Help us make sure that we look at these families and be able to provide real services, real wraparound services. Let's stop the bureaucracy games. These are dollars. One point four million dollar cut, nowhere compares. Two homicides, that's two million dollars right there. And how many have we prevented? That's all we're asking you to keep in mind when you count about, when you think about this vote.
Thank you. Ruth Rios. Ruth Rios. Ruth Rios, sir, your name?
My name is Ricardo Mora. I am currently with Helper Foundation, a gang intervention worker. I'm, I'm kinda like, um...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Was your name Carl?
Ricardo Mora, yes, it was.
Was your name Carl?
Yes.
All right, go ahead. There it is.
I said, I'm, 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 I'm kind of like in a, in a, in a position of, of trying to understand and bring clarity to my thoughts. Um, with all due respect to the Jackson family, when Michael Jackson passed away, we spent one million dollars plus on his funeral. That was on the, on a death issue. But I'm talking about, why would we do that and not spend one million plus on life? And that's, that's the whole purpose and goal of intervention. We're on, we're on a mission to save our city. We're on a mission to, to break down that cycle of, of self-defeating behaviors, of that cycle that had its grip on my life. As a direct result of this change process, I've done, I've done the necessary changes in my life. And another thing is, we spent two hundred thousand dollars on Reggie. I don't understand how, how we could address Reggie, because he's a, he's a, a threat to the society, but there's so many more crocodiles and predators out there waiting for our children if we don't do something about it right here, right now, today. Thank you.
Yval Kremmer. Yval Kremmer. Lloyd. Ma'am, your name?
Ruth Rios.
Ruth Rios. Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ruth Rios and I am here this afternoon on behalf of Hillside Village Homeowners Association in El Sereno. As a community organization, we have been and continue to be deeply committed to fighting the preservation of basic public services within our community. Two months ago, March ninth, we were here, as we are today, urging this council to please consider the detrimental impacts and cuts to paramedic and fire services to our community. One of our neighbors who also spoke that day had recently lost his father to a heart attack as a direct result of longer response times by emergency services. And to punctuate the point, one of your own staff members collapsed and was in need of mer- of emergency services. As a result, most every council member present that day voted not to consider any such cuts to these services, no matter how the numbers were crunched, if it involved jeopardizing lives.
Thank you, ma'am. Yval Kremmer.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm here to talk about the Animal Services Department, um, which I feel has been like always underfunded and, um, it's quite sad. It seems like animals in this city are the lowest priority for the city council and for the mayor. Um, and, um, it's, they're so important to the public, to your constituents. And, uh, the euthanization rate, uh, the department is saying that they're gonna be, it's gonna be up to fifty percent, uh, soon. They're gonna be killing half the animals that are coming into the shelters. Um, we're talking about tens, tens of thousands of animals, kittens. I mean, it's really disturbing. And personally, if I was on the city council, I wouldn't be able to sleep at night knowing that. Um, it's such a small amount of money involved. I think the mayor's office budget is larger than the Animal Services Department budget, which is shameful. Um, and, uh, the department's budget has been continuously cut and I hope you properly fund it and get it a general manager, not an interim general manager. Thank you so much.
David Kipner. David Kipner. Richard Chave. John Q. Lee. John Q. Lee. John Lee.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is John Q. Lee, not John S. Lee. And I stand before you today, uh, to show my support for the Department of Building and Safety and to thank you, the members of the council, for your efforts to help them retain their enterprise-funded positions. This plan is very important, uh, for two reasons. One, uh, is to help the department achieve its overall mission and objective for the city of L.A., but also to put it in the best position, uh, when this economy, uh, as this economy continues to improve. I thank you again for your support and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry Gamble. Henry Gamble.
I'm Henry Gamble, team librarian, and I'm here to save the city half a million dollars. The Budget Finance Committee calls for the library to spend this amount to explore how volunteers can keep all seventy-two city libraries open after layoffs. Of course, volunteers have not been used in this fashion since the Prairie days. This council would never tell any other city agency to use volunteers to run their daily business operations and keep themselves open. And I respectfully doubt that the council would consider asking volunteers to run its own city council offices and keep them open. For the council surely knows that payment is a remarkable incentive to get people to show up at all. And workers showing up like all of us in these chambers do, day in and day out, ensures that the people of L.A. have the quality services that they need and that they deserve. So how to save the city half a million dollars? Get volunteers to write your report.
One more out, first, sir, you'll be removed from the chambers. Tina Carlist. Tina Carlist. Dr. Perry Crouch. Dr. Perry Crouch. Doctor.
Good afternoon. Well, it's no ladies, but gentlemen. Um, I've worked with the majority of you here and over and over again, you've asked us to answer the bell. And we've always answered the bell. From saving lives, you told us to do three things. Accountability, weed out those, that was intervention that was, uh, wearing two hats. We did that. And also to save lives. What we asking you now, ding ding! Answer the bell for us, because we've always answered the bell when y'all called on us. Please, don't cut the services, increase the services, 'cause we tired of washing cars when young people get killed and selling candy and all that other stuff to bury them. We wanna go to graduation. Thank you, don't cut the budget.
We're gonna go to San Fernando Valley. Susan Rocha. In the San Fernando Valley, Van Nuys, and then Donna Pyramin, two speakers in the San Fernando Valley. Switch to the Valley, please.
Uh, I'm finding my notes.
Is Susan Rocha still there?
No, she isn't.
Donna Pyramin, is Susan Rocha still there?
Uh, no, she's not here.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, um, shoot. Okay, I'll have to wing it, it looks like, 'cause I can't find my notes. I got some... Because I can't find my notes. I got so annoyed. Okay, it's not right to do cuts on city services and not right to do furloughs. I think we should go after the CRA. CRA is where they're taking all our tech instrument dollars. I wish I had my notes. Okay, this is not right, what you're doing. We're not going to have any more furloughs. This is time, we have to stop doing this. The city council always continually misuses our money. And giving all our... Misusing all our money on all these different projects. And we're not going to have any more furloughs. We're not going to have any more layoffs. If you really wanted to have layoffs and you talking it, you would do so. Just do it.
I do.
Don't just talk. Hear yourself speak.
Time's up. Thank you. Gerald Cavett. Gerald Cavett. Gerald Cavett. Madeline Kerr. Madeline Kerr. Followed by Barbara Metzenbaum. Then John Martin. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Madeline Kerr and I'm a librarian and I'm an information specialist. When I show people how to do for themselves at the library to find good and reliable information, I am teaching information literacy. This skill is so important that the President of the United States created Information Literacy Awareness Month. Articles about the necessity of this skill and the lack of training devoted to it have appeared in numerous national publications. It is the realm of the librarian and there are fewer and fewer of us. I am a specialist at this. I have spent six years in training for this. I also have my master's degree. I am not replaceable by a volunteer. Volunteers do have a place at the library, but not in the capacity of a degreed professional or as a member of our clerical staff who have access to members' personal information, including the books that they read, their address, passwords, and phone numbers. This is violation of patron privacy, personal safety and security. Are you ready for these issues? Please keep our libraries open and staffed by professionals. The kids and teens of this city are not expendable. Libraries are not expendable and my skills are not replaceable.
Barbara Metzenbaum. Barbara Metzenbaum. John Martin. John Martin. Kathy Martin. Sir, your name?
Gerald Cavett.
Did I call you already?
I believe so.
I don't... Let me look for the card first. Lupe Vasquez? Lupe, come on up while I look for this other gentleman. Sir, your name again?
C-A-V-I-T-T, last name.
Cavett, okay, go ahead, sir. Go ahead. You called. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'm here to hopefully put some light on it. Out of all the work that intervention does out here right now, it's definitely a crucial time. Things are getting a lot better in the street with black and brown relationships. At least even learning how to deal with these issues that's not front line and seen by law enforcement or anybody else. This takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. These problems that flow over into the schools from elementary to middle to high school, there's a bond that's being made. And we trying to continue to raise the bar here and build on what we got and not cut it down right now at this time. You're not going to get a better group of organizations and people that do this work. We put in eight hours a day on the clock. We put in sixteen more hours sometime off the clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, go ahead. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Lupe Vasquez and I'm a resident of Hillside Village. I've dialed 911 two times in my entire life. Our local paramedic service was there in minutes. I've come to rely on them and have faith that they will be there if and when I have to call them again. When here last time, on March ninth, I spoke to you about the faith I have in them, how I never know if I'll have to call them again. Like my car insurance, I pay and pay, not knowing if one day I'll have to make that call. My neighborhood has a large senior citizen population along with two elementary schools, a middle school, high school, and university that serve two hundred and fifty thousand students a day. We need to keep our paramedic and fire service like money in the bank. This is an investment we should not do away with. Last time here, most of you voted not to cut from essential services. I ask you today to keep your word. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Alenez. Yolanda Alenez. Sylvia Ramirez. Sylvia Ramirez. Go ahead.
My name is Sylvia Ramirez. I'm here representing all the children of all the child cares that this council has decided to eliminate. We would... I'm asking to please reconsider eliminating the childcare programs. It is very important to the parents that they have licensed childcare. So I'm asking you with all my heart, begging you, please reconsider your decision on eliminating the childcare center on June eighteenth. Thank you.
Lena Waller. Lena Waller. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm not Lena Waller, but I think my card must have been misplaced because people who came after me...
Nothing's been misplaced. We haven't gotten everyone yet. There's still about fifty cards.
People who came after me have already spoken.
There's still about fifty cards left, ma'am. Lena Waller. Erica Caswell. Erica Caswell. Judy Donovan. Lakeia Johnson. Jacqueline Chalea. You are who, ma'am? Your name?
Lakeia Johnson.
There you go, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm a case manager with Solidar Intervention Action, Gang Reduction Youth Development Program. I'm sitting here standing to ask for your reconsideration in reducing the funds for the GRID program. I remember a lot of faces here that, when I was younger, they were visitors at my church. And I remember some of the promises that were made when I was sitting in the congregation of my church. And I believe that, as I was listening to those promises, I wasn't old enough to vote. But when I was old enough to vote, I remembered how much power I had as a young person and how my vote counted. These young people that we deal with on a day-to-day basis, eventually will be eighteen, will be able to vote, and will be able to conduct themselves in your communities and in your areas and be able to regulate what they want to see done and happening. So I ask that you remember those things when we're ready to reconsider the budget for the GRID. Thank you.
Melva Hayward. Shannon Uo. Jacqueline Chalea. Rosario Bly. Roxanne Rice. Rita Sharna. Jonathan DeJesus. Bart Trevino. Your name, sir? Bart Trevino. Thank you.
Well, I've been here since this morning, but good afternoon, councilman. My name is Bart Trevino. I work for New Directions for Youth as a program manager for the GRID program in the Panorama City Mission District. I've come before you to ask you not to cut these budgets. We service these kids right now with the dollars that are done with comprehensive services from case management to counseling to parenting education, academic schools, after-school programs, so on and so forth. My plea is that if you do cut this budget, we'll only be contributing to the problem, not making solutions for the problem. We have a comprehensive staff that work tirelessly and endlessly. I'm here today because of people that volunteered. Can you imagine the budget crisis that we're going through today without people that are getting paid? Please, do not cut this budget and make sure that we keep the dollars and continue to provide the services that are needed for these families. Thank you and hope that you consider these considerations of all the GRID people here today. Thank you very much.
Johnny Godinez. Johnny Godinez. Angel Marie Medina. Are you Johnny Godinez?
Yes.
Okay, sir.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Johnny Godinez. I'm with SEIA Gang Intervention for Boyle Heights GRID. And I'm just here to support our, you know, our gang intervention workers and prevention workers. We've been working very hard, you know, with the clients, you know, to redirect their lives. And, you know, there's a lot of cases that being released. You know, we have inmates and people that are being released and success stories. They're getting jobs and victims that are losing their families. And there's so much crisis out there that we need to really think about this because summer's coming and we have our schools that are going to be in summer all running around. We don't just help gang members, we also help all people from violence, stopping violence. So it's a safety issue. So I hope you consider this, that it's a safety issue. We have a lot of young people that are going to need our assistance in the streets out there in the trenches. Thank you very much.
Albert Murrow. Go ahead. Who are you?
Angel Annie Medina.
Your name?
Angel Annie Medina.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I'm twenty years old and I've been a client for SEIA Soro Gang Intervention since the age of sixteen and now I'm a single mother. And SEIA has helped me throughout my journey in my life. And I've made a lot of mistakes in my life and I've been incarcerated for plenty of times also when I was pregnant. And they've helped me out throughout my life with counseling, with life skills, with pregnancy, like pregnancy counseling and like helping me get through my life and move forward. And I think that if you eliminate these programs, they would affect our community a lot because I could have been incarcerated right now. I was facing seventeen years and now I'm free today and I am able to be with my child. And that is a privilege for me and Johnny and all the counselors here. And everybody with the gang intervention has helped me and I'm free today and I have that privilege to be with my kid. And I'm just really thankful for SEIA.
Alexander Lopez.
Hello, my name is Alexander Lopez. I'm here representing GRID. I don't know why you guys want to cut the budgets. I mean, it's like, you know, GRID has helped me throughout my life. I've been in jail like twice in my life. If it wasn't for them, I'd probably be dead or in jail, you know? I just, I would have hoped my brother would have got that chance too. Would have had a problem, like GRID probably wouldn't be facing life right now. And I don't understand why you guys want to take the budget from me. I mean, is it helping us, you know? It's like, put it like, if your kids was in place of us, like, would you do the same, the same thing? What if your kids was getting shot? Would you take away the money to help them? You know, like, I just want you to consider that and think about it, you know? Sleep on it, like, what you doing to us? We are the future. You're going to mess up the future? You know, it's your country, like, we're the future, ain't it? What do you expect of us, you know?
Laura Ramirez. Laura Ramirez. Followed by Michael Carrion.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Laura Ramirez. My son attends Banning Childcare. I'm asking that you all please do your best and save dependable, affordable, and licensed childcare. This city, this service is needed. I'm a single parent and I depend on this service to care for my seven-year-old son. I work eight to six and Banning Childcare drops him off and picks him up from school and I pick him up after work. He is cared for properly and there is not one doubt in my mind that my son is safe while in their care. Childcare is a city... I'm sorry, licensed childcare is a city service that I and many other parents need and depend on. To be an employee in a licensed childcare for the city of L.A., you need to take child development classes. They know kids and have chosen a career to service and to care for the kids. Please, I'm asking you to save childcare.
Thank you. Michael Carrion is our next speaker. After that is Albert Murrow.
Yes, Mike, my name's Michael Carrion. If you don't want to cut these projects, listen up, Mr. Rosenthal. He stated that you're going to get tickets or charge people. You got police cars parked right outside this building illegally. Side them and collect their money. On Broadway, you got police vehicles blocking the bus zone. But you guys never did nothing about it. Shame on you. You want to make some money, side these people. But they have an eat plate. That means they're city employees, so they're exempt. You guys do not do nothing. We come and we give you examples how to make money. You got parking lots here that owe you taxes you never collected. Take the property, make the money yourself. You guys sit here and make big dollars and don't do anything. We voted for you to make some decisions. And what do you do? You slash us. You want to save some money? Do not let a police officer take a car home who does not live in the city of Los Angeles, who lives in San Bernardino Riverside.
Albert Murrow. It's Albert Murrow. Albert Murrow. Gina Zelaya. Good afternoon.
My name is Gina Zelaya. I'm with the Youth Justice Coalition. Taking eight percent from something that greatly helps us out is pretty dumb. I mean, these are people that give us what we need. I mean, taking eight percent from them shouldn't be done. Take one percent from law enforcement and give us what we really need, which will give us a hundred million dollars, more youth centers, more gang intervention workers, and more jobs for the youth. The GRID program has really helped me out a lot. Like, before, I was, I guess, you can say I was messing up a lot. But now it's like, they help me even more. So, all the youth, with us here, we're here fighting for what we really want. We, the youth, demand respect. All we want is one percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Maria Zapata? What's your name, sir?
Albert Murrow.
Albert, I'm gonna make sure, you got a card in here?
Huh?
Oh, you're Albert Murrow. Okay, got you. Thanks. Go ahead.
My name is Albert Murrow. I'm just here in behalf of SEIA Gang Intervention, Boyle Heights area. And I just like to say that, you know, it helps us youth, you know, stay out the streets and they provide us with services that we need and, you know, help us with employment and, you know, make sure we have safe passage to and from school. And, you know, you guys shouldn't cut our budget, eh? That's it.
Thank you. Maria Zapata?
My name is Maria Zapata. And I'm going to present, we should be able to apply to the intervention because we need to have more. They don't support us with those deals, but they will balance it or they will kill us.
Momentito? Pues vamos a la opción. I think it's on there.
My name is Maria Zapata. My name is Maria Zapata. I'm going to fight against this, that they want to cut the support for the intervention.
I come here to fight against the people that wants to cut the support for the intervention.
And we need to have this support of yours because it's very necessary.
We need you to give us that kind of support because it's necessary.
They don't support morally and economically to all the parents that lose their children, that will kill us.
They help us, parents that lose their children. They help us morally and economically when they kill our children.
And I beg you to support us and to try to avoid, for them to take away our schools and to take the things that support us. For this, I beg you to support the gang intervention that help the parents that need them a lot. Gracias.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
ayudando a esos padres que los necesitamos mucho.
I beg you to support the gang intervention that help the parents that need them a lot.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
I just would like to, wait seven seconds for the time. She said it's okay. I would really, really appreciate if they could wake up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we can't switch time over, but thank you, appreciate your point. Gerardo Gomez is our next speaker. And then Israel Abundis?
Rosenthal.
Hey, if you could adjust, if you could adjust the council as a whole, thank you.
Get your attention. I'm here to talk about the public safety. The best way to secure public safety is ensuring that the basic human needs are met, right? And by that saying, it's that we can't cut the, the social services, we can't cut the gang prevention. We just heard about homeboys going down. Now, I just, I just asked that the city council member would use your lobby and the interest to try to raise the $5 million or the $6 million that homeboy industries need so that they can continue doing the work that they do. And I also come here to talk about, like, if we wanna fix the budget, let's fix the salaries that you guys have. You guys make over $90,000. If you guys cut that off, put it in a general public fund, that money will be used to, like, hey, save children's lives and then we can balance that. So instead of cutting social services, look at your salaries and see, and make, make a balance of that.
Thank you, sir. Just as you know, we did the last three years, that's something we have done for the last three years. Israel Abundis is our next speaker. And after that is Amirna Moreno. Is Israel here? Is Amirna here? Good afternoon.
I'm Amirna Moreno. Gang Intervention has helped us out a lot. They've kept us out of the streets. They help us in school, at home. They're, they're there for us when we need them and... They help us out in court with our PO. They helped me out get out of juvie. And I'm just saying, like, don't...
You're doing great, don't worry. Take your time.
Just, they're... They're there first.
Okay, thanks very much. Olisa Anene? Is Olisa Anene? Nope. Michelle Craken? Kian Dazide? Hello, sir.
Hi, did you call Olisa?
Yeah, Olisa.
Yes. Hi, my name is Olisa Anene. I'm a principal architect with OCA Architects here in Los Angeles. I came in to speak on behalf and in support of not reducing the staffing level currently at Building and Safety. As an architect and someone who has filed well over 500 permits in the last 20 years with the building department, I understand their role as a public service entity of the city that's also been generating revenue to the city itself. I just wanted to make a few points in support of not reducing staff because it will create a major hardship on most of our development efforts with the city. For one, that I see this Building and Safety not just as a code enforcement entity, but also as a revenue-producing entity of the city. It produces new permits to encourage development and by so doing, the city experiences growth, creates jobs, and increases its tax base. I just wanted to emphasize that I'm in support of not reducing staff.
Thank you, sir.
In order not to create any hardship on these future projects. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your patience today as well. Sarah Roman? Sorry, Sarah who, Roman? Thank you for your patience as well.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarai Roman. I'm a parent of two beautiful children who attend Evergreen Daycare Center. It's a licensed daycare center that provides services to hard-working parents here in Boyle Heights. A necessity for these services are crucial and essential. I strongly urge you to reconsider your proposal. We have many hard-working parents that need these services, that, you know, questions will arise if you change this proposal. Will the quality be the same for my child? Will the hours be extended the same for my child? When teachers have furloughs, what will happen to my child? Will I be forced to remove myself from work and pick up my children? These are concerns. As a single parent, I'm very concerned. I got a text from my son, he wasn't here to speak, and he said, "Mom, let them know the changes are good, but just not now. We are going through many hard changes." And yes, the budget is hard, but please consider daycare center. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry? Oh, got you, okay.
Sorry, Sarah?
Yeah, go ahead.
My name's Kian Dazide. I'm a librarian with the city. I work in the South Central area, District Eight. I just wanted to point out that this year Councilman Parks put $200,000 into a small community library in South Central. And there was a reason he did that. He did that because the community and his constituents demanded the more, the more computers be put in the library. And I just think that education's a worthwhile investment. And if we cut the libraries, we're gonna be cutting a lot of education. Kids have no place to go after school. And you saw how many kids were just in this building today. Just think if they're out in the streets running around, it'd be like, "Wild in the Streets," an old song. So, I just wanna say that to save the libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. We appreciate you. Elise Barrere? Was it Barrere? Excuse me, my apologies. I'm sorry about any mix-up before. Thank you for your patience as well. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Elise Barrere. I'm a native Los Angelino. I grew up in Councilmember Correza's district. I'm also a young adult librarian at the Los Angeles Public Library in your district, Mr. Garcetti. And I wanted to let you know that I am a city service. I heard you guys speak a lot. What are we going to lose if we cut city services? Well, when you cut me, you cut a city service. When I'm at work, I help kids do homework, I help teens prepare for college, I help adults find jobs, I provide stress relief through reading, we provide internet access to families which can save them up to $100 a month, we help children learn to read, and we provide shelter from the storm of the violence and danger on the streets in the afternoons in the city. We also nurture the community. I wanna remind you of what Mayor Villagosa said when he opened one of our new libraries. Libraries are safe havens. The Exposition Park Library will be the soul of this community, a neighborhood center where all are welcome. I'm sure your soul is not revenue-producing, but you can't live without it nonetheless. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your service as well. We appreciate you. Jeff Sharu? Jeff Sharu here. Is Dana Tausberg? Rob Tausberg? Griselda Canales? Thank you as well for your patience.
Good afternoon. My name is Griselda Canales. I represent the parent of childcare with license. And I disagree with elimination of those childcare with license. My son, safety, development, and well-being depend on it. Please, don't eliminate those places because we need them. Before to decide to eliminate the childcare with license, touch your heart and think your future childrens. Please, Mr. Reyes from District Number One, help us to work together with those places. We need them. We need actions, no words. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Canales. RP Hazikian?
Nice to see you. Good afternoon.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, RP Hazikian, principal with Gensler Architecture Design Worldwide. We're very concerned about the proposed layoffs at the Department of Building and Safety, especially now when the economy is beginning to turn around. LADBS provides a critical function for our industry. The construction market is cyclical. That's the nature of our business. Government acts slowly and is out of sync. The department has already lost 167 senior staff to Europe. Reducing revenue-generating staff any further will cause major delays in plan check permits and inspection with a negative impact on development, industry, and our city. Rehiring and training will be very costly. So please, we urge you to approve the request of the department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marisela Haragui? And after that, it looks like Coco Mangioi? Hi. Good afternoon.
Hi. Hello, my name is Marisela Haragui. I'm a therapist from Alma Family Services, representing the Grid program in Boyle Heights Prevention. I'm here to oppose a budget cut for the Grid program. As therapists and case managers, in the Grid program, we address the many issues and stressors that youth experience on a daily basis, such as repression, trauma, safety concerns, losses in their lives, such as poor parental supervision, substance use. A lot of them come from low income and dysfunctional families. By addressing the problems, the root problem of grid youth, we are preventing them from joining gangs and using drugs because they're given the tools, the support, and the hope to address these issues. And by cutting these funds, it will jeopardize the assistance they're giving to the youth, the families, and the community level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Coco Mangioi here? Is Susanna Scott here? Ogechi Anun? Ogechi Anun? Jean Champomier? Jean, sorry. Such a fine line between Jean and Jean, but this is clearly Jean.
Yeah, good, good afternoon and thank you for your patience also.
Absolutely, no. That's what we're here for.
Oh, thank you. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm the CEO and president for Alma Family Services, which is the lead prevention agency for the Boyle Heights area grid. It is somewhat of a divine miracle that I should be standing before you advocating for a gang reduction and intervention program. As a youth growing up in the L.A., in an L.A. gang breeding territory, I came to distrust all efforts aimed at dealing with gangs from the city government and police department that at the time, I came to believe, had no real connection or accountability to the local community. I was desperate to find, at my young age, about 15, 16, that what the writer James Baldwin called a gimmick. Something I could use for self-preservation and a means to get out of the vortex of violence which was sucking me in.
Go ahead, you can finish the thought.
Okay. The city's gang reduction and youth development program provides this quote gimmick. It is specific in its focus in terms of objectives and a strong accountability standards for results, both at the community level and the funding level.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. I'm sorry, I just, we usually give people like chance to finish their sentence or their thought, but, yeah, thank you, appreciate your work as well, Jean. Carlios Lane? Is Carlios Lane here? Archamedes Barrera? Mauricio Rafael Trasvina Mangual? Arlida? Nope. Martha Cox Meteekman? Meteekman, sorry, hey. Oh, of course. How are you?
I thought you forgot about...
You win the last card.
I know, I thought, I must be the very last card. I'm going to address today the issue of the layoffs of the 80 engineers and inspectors in the Department of Building and Safety. BOMA supports the recommendation to use furloughs rather than layoffs in order to reduce expenses. We believe the furloughs are a better solution for several reasons. First, laying off staff seems economically prudent now, but fails to take into account the hidden costs of rehiring and retraining when construction increases. Second, retaining employees means the department can respond quickly when requests for construction permits increase. Limiting delays will help businesses move into new spaces more quickly. And third, building inspectors and engineers are well-trained in code interpretation and they understand the city's complex permit processes. Laying them off would mean the loss of their experience, which is especially important in the review of complex systems such as in high-rise office buildings. So we hope that you will take a look at the furlough program. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martha. That will close our public comments for, for this item. It will close the public hearing. Are there any other motions before we go to the regular meeting? Mr. Parks?
I'd just like to make a verbal and friendly amendment to Mr. Wessens 1B that we add an instruction that the, excuse me, the CLA to prepare a budget motion to be heard on Monday in connection with the deliberations of the 2010-11 budget to implement the above actions. So that would be a friendly amendment to his 1B.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Okay. Without objection, that'll be accepted as friendly and amended therein. All right, we will move those motions to Monday. Any concluding comments, Mr. Parks?
Those do, council members, that their staffs may not have a working knowledge of the budget. The CLA's staff is available to walk you through it and give you some information. And with your permission, Mr. President, we ask that we have a, a working dress day that day so that we can not be, we'll be here for a while.
I was thinking black tie. If you wanna compromise, we could go...
All we require is shoes.
No, no. We require more, to be very clear, as council president, we require more than shoes.
No, I mean, shoes with proper dress.
Right. Thank you. If folks would like to be business casual, that is fine.
That's good.
I have no objection to that. And I know some, some staffs were asking whether we're gonna vote on 1A and 1B and those things today. There's no voting that goes on today. There's introductions of motions. There'll probably be some further introductions of motions on Monday. We can vote as early as Monday, but in my experience, with those of you who've been here as long as I have, about every other year, we either voted on the first day or it goes to a second or third day about half the time as well. So be prepared for the budget to certainly potentially be done on Monday, potentially to go over on Tuesday, depending on what's introduced and what sort of agreement we have on that. I wanna thank everybody who came here today, our city employees, our community members that took time to be here and give comment on what's been a very difficult budget year and one that has extremely difficult decisions. There's no easy way out of what's before us, but certainly we've made some progress. And I thank again all the members of the council for their attention to the public as we heard the public comment. I know a lot of things, we don't usually respond to public comment. A lot was asked by our city employees about, "What are you doing about our suggestions?" And I just wanted to say one thing procedurally from the chair that we've stated here before, but from members of the public who may be listening or city employees who aren't aware of this. When the Coalition of City Unions gave us a budget, we asked our, our top budget analyst from the council side, our CLA, to work solely on that. So while our number two person, Sharon So, was working on the mayor's budget, we had Jerry Miller analyzing line by line everything that was suggested in the budget that was presented to us by the city coalition of unions. And many of the ideas that are helping us move along have come from that and continue to, as well as individual suggestions from our workers out there. So we want you to know that we do not only take that seriously, I've personally read it, as many of my colleagues have, and we will continue to push forward on any ideas that help us balance the budget with a minimal loss of services and the minimal impact on workers' lives that are devoted to the people of L.A. here in Los Angeles. With that, we have no other items that are before us. We don't do adjourning motions for special meeting, so those would have to wait for Tuesday, but we do have some motions for posting, refer, referral, if we can post and refer those, without objection. And do we have any excuses on the desk?
No excuses. Actually, the desk is clear.
Okay. If folks have any announcements, we'd be happy to entertain any announcements. We can't do adjourning motions today, but if there's any announcements folks would like to make. If not, we will be in session on Monday. We begin at, at 10?
At 9:00 a.m.
We begin at 9:00 a.m. on Monday. And I'd like to, colleagues, one last indulgence. Today, I know he's on the phone, but today is Bill Rosenthal's birthday. It is a significant birthday, or tomorrow, excuse me, tomorrow. But this is our closest day to it and we wanna wish him a very happy birthday. It's a significant birthday. He's just gotten past the 35 mark and we know that he's going to enjoy. But we wish him a very happy birthday and many, many more years. Congratulations, Bill, and much love from all of us. Yes, we close the hearing on that. And with that, we will next be in session on Monday. We took the vote on the... We took the vote on the earlier items and I know some folks have to leave for the funeral that was out there. Was this on the Florentine Gardens item? I know the folks who, we had the public hearing in committee, so we would have to reopen it and I think folks are already leaving and have to run to the funeral right now. So my, my apologies, if you'd like to say something on the record, I'd like to adjourn the meeting first. You can say it in the last little bit of time, if we may, on, on Channel Thirty-Five. It would be an informal public hearing though, okay?
No, if, if, if the matter is closed, we'll, we'll accept the...
It was voted through successfully, just in case you didn't know that. The compromise was voted through successfully.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
[inaudible] Parks, Perry, Race, Rosenthal, Westens, Sign, Garcetti.